Call the meeting order. Ms. Zadra, would you lead us in the pledge? Please rise, put your hand over your heart, take your hat off.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every intention of its own.
This time we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Hashef, Guston, Zadra, Sveraza, absent George, Azzie, Kachal.
Here. This time we'll open up the public comments section. Do you have any more? Okay. Joan Oberster? Jean Oberster?
Boy, that was fast. I should be better prepared.
Oh, no, Jean, you're ready. I can tell already.
Somewhat. Thank you very much. A few days ago, I was out on my back porch underneath the carport when I had what you might almost call a religious experience. All of a sudden, it was quiet. By the way, I really appreciate your long moment of silence, Mr. Kachal.
Thank you.
What a feeling it was. I mean, it was absolutely silent out there for just a few seconds, and then I realized why. It was the Our Lady of Snow's children had finally gone back to class. Those kids, they make more noise than the soccer players do on Saturday, and there's probably three times as many soccer players. I really wanted to give them an open mind and a fair hearing on this abandonment issue. And they had me going for a while, you know, with the tearing up asphalt and planting grass and maybe putting new concrete on the basketball courts. But the more I think about it, it just doesn't feel right. It's really kind of distasteful. When the kids first had access, it wasn't that bad because there weren't that many of them, and they kept it mostly up around the basketball courts. And if you felt like going over there and shooting a few hoops, it wasn't that big of a deal. But little by little, there's more and more children and moving farther and farther down into the park, and it's really amazingly loud, and I've sort of gotten used to it. So I'm against this abandonment request that they keep putting before you, and I'd also think that they should be denied the permit for continued use of the park for the recess of their children. It is a disturbance to the peace. And if you can't do that, then their rent should be increased, and they should have to put up some Plexiglas sound abatement. Because you have to have Plexiglas. It's what we use in show business to keep the drums separated from the strings, and Plexiglas would allow vision through there for security reasons. So in closing, I just want to read you a little quote here from Mr. Krishnamurti. It's about 30 seconds long. Silence has many qualities. There is the silence between two noises, the silence between two notes, and the widening silence in the interval between two thoughts. And when you wake up in the middle of the night and listen to an owl hooting in the valley, then there is that silence before the owl's mate answers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bohatch, do you want to speak on L- item L5, or do you want public comment? Because I'm gonna bring up L5 after the consent agenda, and we will talk about that at the time. So why don't you wait on that one? Okay, sir? Thank you.
And please excuse me, I apologize.
What you do? Huh? Oh, okay. Any other public comment, George? Okay. I'll close the public comments section, bring it back for approval of the agenda before we do for motion. Item C1, Proclaimations, item C1, C2, C3, C4 will be done right after the consent agenda. Then we'll be moving item L5 up after the-- excuse me. Before consent. And we'll be moving L5 up after consent. Public hearings, item F1, Lander Street, F2, City of Reno Master Plan, F3, Maniki Parcel, F4, Canyon Pines, will be held after 12:15. There will not be a 6 o'clock meeting. There will be a short recess after, I think it's I1.
Mr. Mayor, staff would request that we move item J3, J4, and J5 to the end of the agenda with item M2, and that before we take those items, we would have a 30-minute recess.
Okay. Yes, sir.
What were you gonna put before consent, Mr. Mayor?
Uh...
Because I don't have anything that I'm gonna pull off consent. We might be able to get some rid of people with 10 seconds.
Okay. Well, the proclamations were before.
Either way you want it.
No, we go ahead and do consent. Anybody have anything you want to pull on consent? Yes, let's do that first. Everybody, y'all confuse us, old man. Okay, so we approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes for March 6.
Move to approve.
Have motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Consent agenda. Any pulled items? Chair entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to proclamation.
Move to approve cash dispersments, Mr. Mayor?
I don't want to do that.
We have to, or the checks we wrote won't be good.
Oh, oh, let's go ahead and do that one. All right, cash dispersments. Any-- yes, sir. None? Any down on this end? No?
Move to approve.
Have motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anything y'all want to change, though? Okay, now we'll go to the proclamations. Reno Jazz Festival. Mr. Guston.
Could you let me step in here? Are you Larry?
Yes.
Perfect for you, Mr. Mayor, because all that jazz you've been going through this morning. Whereas the Reno Jazz Festival will celebrate its 50th anniversary in April 2012 and during Jazz Appreciation Month as defined by the National Museum of American History, and whereas Reno City Council-- excuse me-- has maintained a continued commitment to the community's livability, economic viability, and personal well-being achieved through parks and recreation, arts and culture programs, activities, and events. Whereas the Reno Jazz Festival is one of the oldest and largest educational jazz festivals of its kind, and whereas over the past 50 years, the Reno Jazz Festival has attracted well over 300,000 visitors to the Truckee Meadows, and whereas the Reno Jazz Festival has provided our community with an annual economic impact estimated at $2.5 million. And whereas the Reno Jazz Festival has provided-- within-- through its programming, the festival has provided cultural diversity to the residents of the City of Reno and festival participants. And whereas throughout its 50-year history, the festival has enriched the jazz education of students throughout the state, the West, and internationally. And now therefore, on behalf of Robert A. Kachal, Senior Mayor of the City of Reno, we do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Reno Jazz Festival Month. And let me introduce Mr. Larry Ingstrom, who is the Festival Director from the University of Nevada from 19-- and he's been at the University of Nevada since 1991.
I'd like to, as Director of the Festival, this is my 22nd year, I would like to thank the Mayor and the Council very much for this proclamation. It's been a real privilege to serve as Director of the past 22 years, but I would be remiss if I did not make it very clear that this was all in existence long before I ever came to this town and is the result of many hours of long and hard work by Mr. John Carrico, the founder of the festival in 1962. And today, we have a couple members of his family in attendance, and I would like to acknowledge them for all that they did for the Jazz Festival as well. And this is wife of John Carrico, Helen Carrico here, and daughter Patty. And I would also like to acknowledge CJ Walters, who has helped put on this festival with me for the last 20 years and has done an amazing job. We bring over 10,000 people to the community every year, and I know that it has a large impact on the students and the artists and the audience attendees. I myself, my life was changed when I came here from central California in the early '70s to attend the festival as a performer. And, you know, I have to say that when the job opening came for the trumpet professor of the University of Nevada, I went, "I know that place. I want to go there. They have this great jazz festival." And lo and behold, it all worked out. So it's great to be here. Thank you very much for this honor. We really appreciate it.
Well, we thank you, and we thank your husband and your father for the great work and the thing you've done for our community, because it's a real premium event, and we really appreciate it. And thank y'all very, very much. National Public Safety Dispatcher, Mr. Azzie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really happy to give this proclamation to the folks who are behind all the stuff that people don't see, but without them, nothing would ever happen. Whereas the City of Reno Public Safety Dispatchers and the Public Safety Call Takers are engaged in the operation of emergency response systems for the Reno Police Department, the Reno Fire Department, the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, Sierra Fire Protection District, University of Nevada Reno Police Department, Truckee Meadows Community College Police Department, Reno Marshal's Office, and the Washoe County Department of Alternative Sentencing. And whereas these individuals answer calls for help on 9/11 and non-emergency lines for police, fire, and emergency medical situations, and serve as the critical link for prompt response of officers and firefighters in the field to save the lives and property of all of our citizens. And whereas such calls include not only police, fire, and emergency medical calls, but also those governmental communications related to all public safety and maintenance activities and all other operations which the modern governmental agency must conduct, which resulted in contact by the public amounting to an estimated total number of calls handled for the year of 2011 by over 444,000 calls. And whereas the City of Reno Public Safety Dispatchers and Public Safety Call Takers are dedicated and hardworking, often under difficult circumstances and with an extraordinary workload. And whereas the City of Reno Public Safety Dispatchers and Public Safety Call Takers daily serve the public in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their services, now therefore, I on behalf of Robert A. Kachal, Senior Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 8 through the 14th, 2012, as National Public Safety Dispatcher and Call Taker Week in and for the City of Reno, and encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate the contributions that the Reno Public Safety Dispatchers and Public Safety Call Takers make to our community.
Want to say something? Thank you guys.
We're living all the time, now you don't want to.
Thank you guys. Thank you guys for everything you do. We really appreciate it. And we've had some real extreme things in the last 12 months, and you've really come through as true champions, and thank you very much. Mr. George for Housing Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas April 2012 marks the 44th anniversary of the Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Federal Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, rental, and financing of housing and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added familial status and handicap to those classes protected by Title 8 and added strong new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and judicial and administrative enforcement procedures. And whereas Nevada state law includes additional protections based on ancestry, sexual orientation, and gender identity or expression, and where it is the solemn and sworn duty of government at all levels to defend the rights of all citizens and oppose housing discrimination whenever and wherever it occurs. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, that diminish the rights of some of our citizens diminish the rights of all. And whereas Silver State Fair Housing Council actively works to ensure equal housing opportunity for all people in the Truckee Meadows to freely choose where they want and can afford to live. And whereas the City of Reno supports the efforts of Silver State Fair Housing Council and all other agencies pursuing fair housing. Now therefore, I on behalf of Robert A. Kachal, Senior Mayor of the City of Reno, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Fair Housing Month.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Catherine Kneister. I'm the Executive Director of Silver State Fair Housing Council. You've seen me a few times before. I just want to say thank you again so much for the support from City of Reno, from community development block grant funding that allows us to promote equal housing opportunity in the City of Reno. We do lots of fun things, and I think everybody knows. Councilman George's daughter has actually been a winner in our poster contest. But we do Fair Housing Month poster contests every year. We distribute calendars throughout the year promoting every month as Fair Housing Month. But we also do a lot of serious work, working with housing consumers in our community, working with housing providers to make sure that issues of housing discrimination are addressed before someone suffers that indignity. And we can't do that without your support. So thank you so much.
Thank you for the outstanding job. We appreciate it. Ms. Zadra. Community Development Week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be up here with Jody. She kind of took a bit of a hiatus from our operations and back doing an incredible job. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program was enacted and signed into law by President Gerald Ford as the centerpiece of Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. And whereas the CDBG program has a primary objective, the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas the CDBG program has considerable flexibility to allow communities to carry out activities that are tailored to their unique affordable housing and neighborhood revitalization needs. And whereas the CDBG program has had a significant impact on our local economies through job creation and retention, physical development, and providing necessary services, and improved local tax bases. And whereas Reno, Nevada, and other local governments have clearly demonstrated the capacity to administer and customize the CDBG program to identify and resolve pressing local problems such as affordable housing, neighborhood and human services needs, job creation and attention, as well as improved infrastructure and physical development. Whereas Congress is considering dramatic reduction in the CDBG funds, and any reduction in funding impacts the City of Reno's ability to address community needs. Now therefore, I for the Mayor of the City of Reno, Robert A. Kachal, Senior, do hereby proclaim that April 8 through the 14th is Reno Community Development Day, and hereby urge Congress to provide a level of formula funding for the CDBG in 2013, in and for the City of Reno, and urge all citizens to join us in supporting this valuable program and recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and its importance to
Mayor, Council members. Jody Royal Goodwin, on behalf of the City of Reno, I just want to thank you yet again for all of your support. You know, the city's been receiving these funds for more than 30 years now, and we've done a lot of good work with them from economic development, like at the West Street Market creating jobs, as well as Northeast Community Center and others that provide not only a physical place, improvements within a low and moderate income neighborhood, but also valuable services over the long term through our Parks and Rec Department. And none of that would be possible without both all of you and our external partners like Silver State Fair Housing. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks for the great work.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Mayor, Mr. Manager and Council, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department, it's my distinct pleasure today to present chief's commendations to four of our citizens for interrupting a robbery in our community that occurred on February 17th of this year. With me today is Lieutenant Muhammad Rafiquat, Mr. Michael Jewell-- sir?
Sewell.
Sewell. Mr. Michael Collins, Ms. Joyce Collins, and Ms. Tarina Porowski. On February 17th of this year, at about 4:35 in the afternoon, Mr. Sewell observed a vehicle blocking the driveway to his home located at 745 Tahoe Street. As he approached the vehicle to inquire what was going on, the driver, victim, Tarina Porowski yelled out that she was being robbed at gunpoint. The suspect subsequently identified as Melvin Fields was seated next to the victim and was able to-- and Mrs. Porowski was able to exit the vehicle and became involved in a physical altercation with the suspect over the handgun. During this struggle, the suspect pointed his gun at Mr. Sewell and attempted to tase him with a stun gun. Subsequently, Mrs. Porowski, Mr. Michael Collins, and Ms. Joyce Collins joined, and together they were able to disarm the suspect and subdue him until the Reno Police Department arrived. Mr. Collins and Mrs. Collins are relatives of Mr. Sewell's and were inside their residence and responded immediately to the yells for help. These citizens' willingness to assist and place themselves in harm's way while confronting a suspect who was armed with a handgun, their unselfish actions demonstrate bravery and a commitment in doing the right thing, especially in a situation where they were at extreme risk. Ladies and gentlemen, your actions exemplify excellence in the performance of civic responsibility, and your devotion has brought honor to yourselves and the community. On behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department, I want to thank you for your bravery and for your actions that day. The citations read, "On February 17th, you interrupted an armed robbery in progress in the 700 block of Tahoe Street in Reno, Nevada. During this incident, you struggled with an armed suspect despite having him having a loaded handgun and pointed it at you. Subsequently, with the assistance of the victim and other family members, you were able to disarm and subdue this suspect. Your willingness to assist and place yourself in harm's way, your unselfish actions, bravery and commitment in doing the right thing, and standing up against an armed individual when you were unarmed exemplify excellence in performance of civic responsibility. Your unselfish devotion has brought honor to yourself, as mentioned before, and the community." And on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department, we want to thank you. Would you like to make a comment?
I'm kind of lost for words.
Identify yourself.
I'm Michael Collins. Kind of lost for words. I've received many medals and awards in the Marine Corps, and I've always had the right thing to say. This is quite an award, not only from the City Council and the Deputy Chief of Police, but an award to know that we are helping the police officers keep the community safe. So it just takes courage like this to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Mr. Kachal, I'm Tarina. I was the victim. I really hate that word. Mostly what the guy did was just kind of piss me off. I mean, I had $8 on me, and if he was gonna shoot me over $8. But I want to say, without these people, these wonderful people who came to my aid, there would have been no way I-- I would imagine that I could have stopped him. I gave him a good one to the nads, though. But I want to thank them very much. They were there when I needed them, and they came right away.
Oh, that's great. That's great. Now, what would-- you want to say something, sir?
I just wanted them to move their cars so I could get my backyard.
Do you have something to say, young lady?
I just wanted to say thank you, and I would have helped even if it wasn't my dad, no matter who it was. So, thank you.
Thank y'all very much, and what I'd like for you to do is come by here and let us say thank you again. That man. She just informed me that she used to work for me, and she almost had her baby in the middle of my 21 pit. Thank you for not doing that. We would have named him 21.
Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, thank you, and thank y'all very, very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this time I'd like to pull up item 11-- L-- excuse me, L5, Presentation Discussion, Potential Direction to Staff Regarding Law Enforcement Blue Light Project. Mr. Bohatch. Oh, Ms. Bohatch is not coming, she gonna let him do all the work. Okay, I understand.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, May 13th and 19th is Police Week this year. It was during the Police Week Memorial in Washington, DC in 2001 that my wife and I and the rest of my family became aware of the Blue Light Project. That was the year that our son's name was placed on the memorial wall in Washington, The Blue Light is the thin blue line that protects us from criminals, lawbreakers, and chaos. Last year, with the help of you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Council, and several generous citizens of Reno, we lit up the Reno Arch in commemoration to Police Week. It was done in order to honor our fallen heroes and the heroes that we still have among us and serving with us. The action of these first providers, the men and women during the Reno Air Races, during the Coglin Fires, during the Washoe-- during the Coglin Fires, during the Washoe Valley Fires, go without saying are a huge testimony to their bravery, to their dedication to duty, and to the honor that they show this community. It's incumbent upon all of us to remember our fallen policemen, our fallen first providers, our fallen military, and especially those who are still serving. Therefore, I ask the city to light up the Reno Arch again in commemoration of Blue Light Week, the Blue Light Project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, with your permission, I'd like to follow up to the Colonel's comments.
Yes, sir.
Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. As he mentioned, in nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation that designated May fifteenth every year thereafter as Police Memorial Week. Currently, tens of thousands of law enforcement officers and their families from actually around the world converge in Washington to participate in a number of planned events which honor those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. National Police Week is from May twelfth through the sixteenth of this year and state and local ceremonies will begin on May first. Unfortunately, for the second straight year, law enforcement fatalities nationwide rose sharply. We lost one hundred and seventy, seventy-three police officers killed in the line of duty in two thousand and eleven. According to the initial analysis released just recently by the National Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, this represents a thirteen percent increase over the one hundred and fifty-three officers killed in two thousand and ten, and alarmingly, a forty-two percent increase when compared with officers injured or actually killed in accidents. So we've seen a forty-two percent increase in officers killed feloniously with weapons. The primary cause of deaths last year, which we haven't seen this since the nineteen seventies, was gunfire, which claimed the lives of sixty-eight police officers. The research into this tells us this, crime fighting and service above self to others is taking a toll on law enforcement in America, where we've seen about nineteen hundred law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty since seventeen ninety-one. Currently, there are about nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy-eight names engraved on the walls of the National Memorial Officers' location in Washington. And on the average, over the last decade, there have been roughly sixty thousand assaults on police officers each year resulting in over seventeen thousand fairly serious injuries. As I mentioned before, gunfire leads in the deaths and it's its highest since the seventies, where we saw two hundred and forty to two hundred and eighty officers killed a year then. Fatal ambush-style shootings have increased unfortunately, as close as cities to us as, I believe it's Lakewood, Washington, and Oakland, California, where four police officers were murdered in an ambush-style assault just in the last year. In general, there's been an increasing trend in multiple officer deaths, maybe less than four, but two in three officers killed in one event. Honorable Mayor and Counsel, as you have heard, our profession is becoming increasingly more dangerous, but we stand prepared to accept any challenge and to support anyone who supports our belief in freedom and liberty of every citizen that we serve. We would ask that you honor the request of Colonel and Mrs. Bohatch to light the Reno Arch in blue lights from May first, actually two weeks, through the sixteenth, so we'll cover the local ceremonies and then those at the national level in honor of these fallen heroes and in support of their families. And I'll take any questions if you have any, sir.
Chief, I think we should leave them up from May first till June first. Is that disrespectful or is that...
No, I have no problem with that.
I mean, once we get them up there, we should leave them in honor of our fallen heroes that have helped us.
Thank you. As far as the economics of this, the Mayor did ask me previously, with your permission, I've got some asset forfeiture money, I think it's going to cost us about twenty-five hundred dollars to replace some of the bulbs that were broken last year and need replacement. So with your permission, I'll go, I'll move forward with that.
Well, I'd be glad to take some out of my discretionary fund and to help you balance it, and I think all of my colleagues would be willing to take out of the discretionary, so let us know, let the City Manager know and we will take out whatever it needs to take care of.
Yes, sir. And it's an honor serving, thank you.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Hascheff?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to follow the Chief's recommendation that we go ahead and install the new lights from May first to June first.
Have a motion, second. Would you include help funding out of the discretionary funds?
Yeah, whoever, whatever council members have it.
Yeah, whatever we need, bring it to us, okay? Have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll go to item F one, Lander Street Maintenance. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given, we received one letter of support, thirty-five in opposition.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we open this agenda item or get to it, we've been requested by the City Attorney to do as we did last time, this was heard, in the interest of transparency, to disclose, and so I will start as I did last time. I disclose to the public and to tell them that I do attend church there, I've had a daughter that graduated from the school probably a little more than twenty-plus years ago, but that's my only affiliation. I would go on to say that I have no financial interest in this transaction, I have not received a gift or loan relating to the matter, I have no facts demonstrating that a vote on this matter would reasonably affect my commitment in a private capacity to the immediate family member or business association. And finally, I've not made up my mind yet and will consider all evidence presented on this item, even though I've talked to people on both sides of the issue, extensive phone calls with the presenters that are going to be here this morning, I talked to city staff, but my decision will be made when I hear all the evidence. So that's almost verbatim of what my disclosure was last time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, same disclosure. I've attended the church, it's not my parish, but I have attended church there.
Okay, Mr. Hascheff?
Yeah, same disclosure, Mr. Mayor, although I did graduate from Lady of the Snows many years ago, as well as I do go to church there occasionally, same with Little Flower.
Mr. Ozzy?
I drive by occasionally, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Adra?
Mr. Mayor, I have no disclosures, I attended Willinghurst back in the sixties, and I've talked to both the residents as well as the applicant on numerous occasions, residents that are on both sides, and I've not received any offer of any sort, no loans or gifts, and I'll make my decision based on the evidence and testimony that we received today.
I'll make the same disclosure as Mr. Guston, but I do want to say that I do have a granddaughter that goes to school there and I do go to church there. I've not made up my mind on this and will consider all the evidence presented today. All right, now we have eleven people in opposition that do not wish to speak, their names will be entered into the record book. We have seventeen people in opposition that wish to speak. As you hear things, if somebody's repeating something or already got the points across, would appreciate it if you would yield to the next person. Lance Van Le Gras. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Marilyn Craig.
Hi, Marilyn.
Would you please reopen the public portion of the hearing because it was officially closed last time?
Oh, okay. We will reopen the public section? Huh? I did open it.
You did again, it's okay.
Well, do it again, I'm opening the public, Madam Secretary, have any second notices? All the notices have been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Proper notice was given and, like I said, one email in support, thirty-five in opposition.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, good morning or good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, Mr. City Manager. I'm here to speak on this issue in opposition to the abandonment. The City Council must abandon the property, but only if it is satisfied, the public will not be materially injured by the abandonment. It's not a question of will safety of students be improved or will the public interest be impaired, it is you must find that the public will not be materially injured by the proposed abandonment. Now, we have and will hear from fine representatives from Our Lady of the Snows, they have three hundred and fifteen students, four thousand eight hundred square feet of office space, they now have fourteen classrooms and an adjacent church with five hundred and seventeen seats. Unfortunately, the materials presented to you don't give you what the parking requirements are for those structures and those uses, but in a last report of two thousand and ten, there were, there was a need for a hundred and thirty-one spaces on their site, which are used by churchgoers for memorial services and others. In the special use permit condition number four, you did ask the applicants to restripe the property where the tennis courts or basketball courts and modular building were. I went by today, it's not restriped. So as a result of abandonment, what sort of public material injury will occur? I have nineteen points. The public uses, loses the use and access to the twenty-four spaces on the school side of the property. Does the public also lose access and use of the twenty-five spaces on the other side adjacent to the park? As a result of the abandonment, does the public lose the ownership of Lander Street North and South and the parking? That's a question I've posed to the City Attorney and I hope they'll have an answer for you because I think that's important. Or just the side of the street that's closest to the school? Is the public use of Walker Street East and West impaired by the present situation where three hundred and fifteen parents drop off their students? Yes. Is the public use of Monroe Street impaired by that same pickup and drop off? Yes. Is the safety of the students' risk of harm increased by dropping off and picking them up on two public streets instead of just one Lander Street? Yes. As a result of abandonment, will the public, will we lose public travel on the sidewalk adjacent to the park or not? What does the Fire Department say? They say this will decrease their ability to provide fire safety. What did the Police Department say? This will increase their ability to patrol. My time's up.
Your time's up.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. I'm a resident of the old Southwest, Plumas Park is the gem of the old Southwest. As a retired California lawyer, I doubt very much that the proposed taking and closing of a public street for this purpose would survive a well-plead, briefed, argued action. The public use by people, by dog people, by teams from all over the area, by dreamers, by the kids is very important and any encroachment, I think, is inappropriate. I have no animus to the needs of snows, Father Mike just gave the last rites to my husband a couple of weeks ago. I think we should tread carefully here, this is getting pretty close to the issue of the separation of church and state. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Rhonda Brockman, I live three doors down from the church on Lander Street, I own that home as well, and I'm here to speak in opposition and ask you not to fine for this abandonment. I think it's important for the members to note that while the church is in the neighborhood, this is not a neighborhood church. It is my observation that the majority of the people who come to the church come from outside of the neighborhood, and I say that because I see most of the people driving. I don't see people walk to church, I don't see people ride their bicycles to church. A lot has been made about the parking issue, I can tell you, I've lived in my home for seven years, every Saturday evening, every Sunday, and every time there's a church special event, all of the parking in front of my house is eliminated. I know that the proposal contemplates that approximately twenty-seven spaces will be restriped on the other side of the park. I don't believe that this will appropriately eliminate the congestion that will happen when we take away the twenty-five parking spaces closer to the entry of the church, and I say that because the entry of the church is on the north side, the new contemplated parking is on the south side, down the street and down a hill. I don't think that that will appropriately make up for the loss of parking spaces. I have concerns based on my reading of the staff reports that the Reno Police Department has expressed concerns that the proposal is likely to generate more calls for parking violations and pedestrian vehicle incidents. An additional concern is, a study was cited within the staff report that talked about the fact that the less traveled an area is, the more likely crime is to occur in that area and how it will make it more difficult for the members of the city, of the Reno Police Department, to respond and to patrol the area in the ways that they have in the past. I'm not going to tell you anything you don't already know when I tell you that property values have been decimated because of the economy, there's nothing we can do about that. But I would ask you to take into account the additional detriment to our property values as homeowners in the neighborhood and the potential impact this abandonment will have. I'm concerned about my ability to travel Lander Street, I walk and ride my bike down to Bebo Coffee routinely, I understand that at this time pedestrian access will still be continued. However, throughout the materials that were submitted to this body, there were, there appears to be a long-term plan to eventually try to buy this abandoned piece of property if in fact it is abandoned. There's contemplated to be a parking agreement. I tried to get ahold of the parking agreement, I was responded to very promptly by everybody I spoke to, but the parking agreement isn't done. The materials specifically state that if and when the abandonment happens and the church is able to buy this property in the future, the parking agreement will be eliminated entirely. So I have concerns about the long-term impact of what could happen here, I realize I'm just about out of time. I would ask you to please focus on the fact that material harm, the public will be materially injured if this abandonment is granted and I ask you to fine against it, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for listening to me. I'm a longtime native Nevadan, longtime resident, ten years, two houses south of the church. I have seen the use of the park by not only the church but the soccer players on Saturdays and it impedes the parking in front of my houses, it currently is, let alone losing the twenty-four spaces. I feel that the Catholic Church School has not been following what you had asked them to do in the last City Council meeting, when you'd asked them to restripe and to put up the appropriate barricades to block off the street. It wasn't until last Monday that they put up a barricade that was successful. Prior to that, they had a rope with five pieces of warning tape on it, and so I even took photographs of it so you could see that as a driver, you would not see this. I also took photographs of some of the children crossing the street with no barricade up at all, that happened on one day, a week after the first meeting. They have been negligent in their responsibility to barricade off the street. I think that that park is a very valuable asset to the neighborhood, I use it myself with my family, I have sometimes up to thirty-five members of my family come to dinner and we use that parking area too. So I would be impacted by this. I feel that they must have an ulterior motive to doing this, I feel that they're going to abandon the street, buy the other half of the street, and then expand the school as their true thing that they want to do. The other thing that I would like you to consider is that I feel like if we leave this park, it will evolve into even better financial income for the city possibly by having festivals and events there, you would have that benefit of having that extra parking. I thank you for your time, if you'd like to see the photos that I have... If you'd like to see the photos that I have, I'd be more than happy to pass them around.
Thank you very much. John Overster again?
Thank you for letting me speak twice. I had to take advantage of that today. Anybody who knows me knows that there's no love lost between me and the Catholic Church. We pretty much hated each other from the first day of kindergarten. And then there's the story I have to tell you. In fifth grade at Our Lady of Snows Church, you'll get a kick out of this. Sister Genevieve decided that, "Wouldn't it be fun to have a fashion show? Oh, but it's going to be, we're going to dress all the boys up as girls." Which she proceeded to do. And it was, she was howling back there. It was quite funny. I've been trying to contact my old classmates, Karen Lyons, Ben and Tim Pulitz, Mark Noble, Joe Bayless, to see if they remember this. But anyway, so I'm a longtime resident there and when, you know, it's really been a disturbance to the peace having the kids recess over there, unfortunately. And I'm going to ask you that you deny their request to continue using the park to recess. Either that or raise their hand and force them to do some sound abatement. And of course, I'm against the abandonment issue. The church and state issue, it's likely that they're going to want to take the entire park someday, you know? They're encroaching into this neighborhood little by little. They're purchasing properties on Wright Street. They purchased the Seventh-day Adventist Church on the corner of Arlington and Monroe. And they purchased one of the most beautiful houses in the entire neighborhood, right across the street from me at 1050 Humboldt, a beautiful one-and-a-half-story brick home residence that was owned by my aunt when I was a child. It has two fireplaces and a full basement. And I'm going, what can the Catholic Church do in that house that they can't do at like some 5,000-square-foot Seventh-day Adventist Church that they already have on Arlington and Monroe? So I called up the assessor's office and, you know, come to find out, the Roman Catholic Bishop of Reno, Nevada owns about 30 properties in this area. The more properties they own, those are taken off the tax rolls. So any good that the church does is lessened or mitigated, as you like to use, you know, by these other things. And come to find out, I'm hearing on the radio because this abortion thing with the, you know, is a big political thing, that the Catholic Church also receives federal money. Catholic Community Service already receives federal money. So, please, you know, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I yield, my points have already been covered.
Thank you very much, sir.
My name is Carrie Riley and I live at 1122 South Arlington between Walker and Monroe Streets. I am appearing before you today to request that you do not approve the Lander Street abandonment between Walker and Monroe. My reasons for requesting this are several. Lander is one of the main uninterrupted thoroughfares from California to Mount Rose Streets. It generally has less traffic than the heavier-traveled Arlington or Plumas Streets. I believe that if Lander is interrupted, this could create an issue for emergency vehicles. Should the traffic be heavy on either Arlington or Plumas and an emergency vehicle needs to redirect, they could be forced to go out of their way, shaving valuable time off their mission. As a homeowner, I am also concerned how this closure might affect the value of my property. I believe I speak for many of my neighbors when I say that my house is my primary asset. I have worked very hard to maintain this asset through difficult economic times and financial challenges. I don't believe that there has been any information or consideration put forth to account for the parking issues that would be created with the closure of parking spots on Lander or the impact on already beleaguered home values if additional traffic was pushed to Arlington or Plumas due to this closure. Lastly, I refer to the old adage, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." We currently have a plan in place that is working. Our Lady of the Snows School has used the Lander Street area for the time appropriate for its needs with barriers in place to enforce this usage. The rest of this time, this street is available for public use. This is by far the most equitable plan to meet everyone's needs and a win-win for both parties. Once again, I request that you do not approve the Lander Street closure and I thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
As I said last night at the rec. meeting, I am the bad boy. Our Lady of the Snows Church, once valued, has come to be seen by many of its neighbors as a bully, taking what once belonged to all and pulling it into a fortress for an elite few from outside of the area who will sit thumbing their noses at the damage they've done. The continued expansions are a bad idea for the neighborhood, which has thus lost respect for the church. Why feel this way? The church now owns most, if not all, the property on the west side of 1100 Block Wright Street. That street will be taken and that entire area integrated into the church and school. The Lander appropriation is not about safety, it's about OLS expansion at the expense of the neighborhood and of the safety of students from both the grade schools. They're after Lander now because it would be much harder to justify taking it with Wright already gone. Wright will be a pushover and then they've cleaved the neighborhood in half. By amazing coincidence, this same legal council presented parks and rec. last night, the night before this vote, with a proposal to lock up their predominant usage of the parking at the same pittance that this wealthy church now pays a financially-strapped city. It is, in essence, becomes the final step but without the upkeep. An interested council might notice that the church has never offered to share anything resembling a comprehensive plan despite ample evidence that there is one. And meanwhile, mounts multi-pronged stealth effort to enact that plan in rapid increments. Lander is the linchpin, the keystone to this strategy and it's the center of the empire that they're in the process of creating. So what we're talking about here is a little mini Minogue. It will be cut straight out of the heart of the neighborhood and its negative impacts will totally accrue to the Plumas neighborhood and the citizens of Reno. To assert that there is no material injury here is, in the words of a former local journalist, ridiculous. As I ask any historically cohesive urban neighborhood chopped in half by a freeway, how destructive that is. And this is a neighborhood distinguished recently as among the top 30 in the U.S. by a national publication. The writing is not just on the wall, there's really a sign out front. It says, "This is obviously what we're doing, just don't ask any questions." Soccer players and their families, pickup players in the basketball courts, dog owners, neighbors, property owners, Mount Rose students and their parents, those who sit and read in peace through travelers, teenagers who sit on the wall at dusk for a twilight kiss. At what point did the interests of countless individuals and groups who use or are affected by that block collide with a rather egregious presumption of the church's request and logically or legally result in abandonment? That's absurd. And that is what's at question today. The council is being asked by the church and school, religious entities, to ignore the interest of the citizens that they represent and give away valuable material assets. For what? Three minutes of peace comments that the city council is the wrong venue to be doing this. Where's the give and take and the ability to ask questions and get answers? Silence has been their communication because they knew the neighborhood would oppose this and they knew that a full airing of the facts would make multiple facets of material injury absolutely transparent. This needs to go back to the drawing board and it needs to have a real input from the neighborhood before the council votes on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Several of my points have already been covered, but I just wanted to mention that I feel that abandoning the street would actually increase the chances of students being injured with vehicle traffic and decrease their safety. I think keeping the street open is the only way to enhance the student's safety.
Thank you very much. Mary Stolen Wreck? Something new?
Thank you, it's Mary Stolen Work. I'm going to yield most of my time here, but I will say I've lived in the Plumas neighborhood since I moved to Reno. When my husband and I decided to buy, we wouldn't look elsewhere. We wanted to be in that neighborhood. Churches and schools and open spaces are very valuable to a neighborhood and open space, public space, needs to be used by multiple, what did I say? Multi-use by the schools as well as the neighborhood. So I think anything, any public space being encroached upon by a private entity is frightening. I do want to just expand a little bit on the access of emergency vehicles. During the Coglin fires, on the Google map, there was one about seven blocks from my house. I live on Wright Street, which is a little crooked street with no, doesn't go through. I don't see a reason to remove one of the few thoroughfares that go from downtown to Mount Rose. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dear Mayor and city councilmembers, I am Teresa Hunsaker and first I'd like to point out a few things that were discussed last meeting but were not implemented since the last meeting. You asked that the school work with the neighborhood. I took that to heart and I asked Dan Guston after the meeting to be involved and then he gave me Claudia Hansen and she took down my number to be involved with the planning. I then took it upon myself to go contact the principal, Tim Fish, to let me be involved with the planning. I have not been notified or contacted except for the blue card in the mail. As a neighborhood, we've been trying to organize ourselves so we can better help serve in these committees and none of us have heard anything. As we move forward, I think it is critical that as we plan the future as a whole neighborhood, the OLS and the neighbors, and I would like to include Mount Rose School as well. Mayor, you asked specifically last time that the loading and unloading zones go into effect immediately with the closure of the street during school hours. That is not being done. There's still illegal parking as shown in these pictures and I, you have them in front of you. These were taken February 27th and yesterday. Both schools are still in danger of their own parents picking up their children, as you see. The photos are of both schools, Mount Rose as well as Lady of the Snows. They're parking in red zones, handicap zones, and they both do U-turns. Both of them did it yesterday, as a matter of fact. Mount Rose has a Kinder Bus parked in one of the pictures there where the students have to load in between the cars leaving. With not using ladder as a drop-off and pickup, you have moved the previous problem to Walker and Monroe, which are more heavily-driven streets. I would like you to take a whole, look at the whole picture, not just one puzzle piece. I would like for you to zoom out and use this information as a whole in planning for future things, no matter what your decision today is. Mount Rose Elementary is now going K through 8, adding on two more grades and possibly in the future installing their pre-K program back. That's more cars, more students, and because it's a magnet school now, it will now become more traffic and people driving in. The neighborhood wants to be included in putting this puzzle together. The neighborhood supports improving playground for students. They want a master plan with options. They want to improve parking and traffic. They want a parking study to include weekends, soccer, church events. They want pickup and drop-off traffic flow reviews to drop off for the whole neighborhood, not just Lander Street, all the streets around that surrounding area. We want a definition of how a permanent closure benefits more than the already partial closure. The basketball court that wasn't fixed because they were going to put a play structure and didn't, for us, doesn't give enough back when you're talking about inverse condemnation. Also redoing a parking lot by the Plumas Gym that was just re-done this last year at the end of the year, doesn't seem feasible. We want OLS to be a part of our neighborhood. They are our neighbor and we would like them to be more than a neighbor than just the drop-off and pickup.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Heather Lee?
My comments have already been covered.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Scott Hall. I live at 634 Humboldt Street. My two children attend Mount Rose Elementary School. We are primarily biking and walking family. We have friends in the neighborhood. Every time we are trying to travel to their homes or to the store or place of business, we go down Lander Street. Right now, there is a orange cyclone fence across the street. There is no access for cyclists such as my family. I would like the city council to oppose the abandonment application and help preserve the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. No relation to Dan Guston. I found my notes from July 29th. I don't remember the year, it was between 2001 and 2004. I had conversations with Ed Schenk and Gary Stalkoff with the city. I called regarding the play structure that used to be in the southwest corner of Plumas Park being cut down and fenced off. Mr. Stalkoff told me it was raised due to public liability but that there was $100,000 budget to redo the playground area. $25,000 for equipment, $15,000 for insulation and surface at $10 a square foot without prep. He said they were going to take the fence out, put a modular piece of play equipment in, a swing set, small piece with bouncers, rubberized surfacing, basketball taken out on the south, north resurfacing of the basketball court, picnic tables, benches, and all ADA accessible. That was to start later that fall in August after quotes were received. Shortly thereafter, OLS was granted their play street, first step. The next first step was the expansion. The next first step was OLS requested the play street from 7:30 to 3:30, Monday through Friday. Generally, they have been consistent since February 8th, although I myself have seen several times when they've taken it down to serve their own parking needs for a special function during those times. I've also seen the barricade not put up until, say, 8:40 in the morning and the same different times in the afternoon as well. I feel OLS, by building their expansion, did away with their playground stating the kids didn't use it or need it. If they wouldn't have done away with their playground, they wouldn't need to use Plumas Park and there wouldn't be children crossing Lander Street throughout the day. I understand they have and have had in the past a permit to use the park, but I think instead of closure of the street, let alone abandonment of Lander, there can be rules set in place for safe travel of kids back and forth. I've also been noticing that since the closure, the pickup and drop-off parents don't park any further down than the gym on the Monroe Street or further than the restroom at Plumas Park on Walker. And this is good weather. They're not going to park that far down when the weather is bad and they have to go walk and pick up their kids. When I, if Lander Street is abandoned, now today when I drive Lander Street, I currently use Wright Street to get around the closure. When, and I say when because this is already in their plan, Wright Street is abandoned, I will no longer be able to drive through the beautiful neighborhood. I will be forced to use Arlington or Plumas, which I avoid currently because of traffic. All my other points regarding the economy and losing value in my home, their good faith effort, I don't believe has been completed. You've asked them to do several things and nothing has been done and mostly they have not tried to contact the neighbors who've been so willing to work with them to develop solutions. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Cashell and City Council. I am highly opposed to the OLS Lander Street abandonment proposal. There are a number of solutions to the traffic-induced child safety issue that do not entail closure of Lander Street but rather utilize its central proximity to the OLS front door. What can be done? One, establish official, I hope I've got this in the right spot, is there?
She'll turn it on.
Establish official no-parking zones on Lander between Walker and Monroe Streets from 7:30 to 4:00 p.m. on school days. Two, establish designated block-long zones for student drop-off and pickup directly in front of the school on Lander. Parents could drive through and use these zones only during drop-off and pickup of their child like the airport handles traffic. The younger children could get out, be let out on the west side of the street closest to the school while the zone for older students could be on the east side of to the school while the zone for older students could be on the east side of Lander. Three, close Lander Street between Walker and Monroe with a heavy chain or gate during school days from 9:30 to 2:30 as in years past. Four, institute four-way stops where Lander crosses Walker and Monroe. Mount Rose School does this on the Lander Street corners for their students. I don't understand why OLS doesn't. Initiate a traffic crossing guards program. Six, establish a waiting area outside of the pickup zone for waiting parents. Seven, start a mandatory student and parent education program on traffic and child safety. With all of these options, is this really a child safety issue or a land grab? One former OLS student told me he received an email urging him to email the City Council in support of closing Lander Street. He was shocked when I asked if he knew the plans entailed permanent closure and the loss of 51 parking spaces for parishioners. He actually said that was unacceptable. On Palm Sunday, I saw cars parked all the way down Walker to Humboldt Street. On holidays and special events, where are 51 cars going to find parking? I have no doubt that they will be in front of my home, making it difficult for my friends and family to come over and visit. I will be deeply saddened if this occurs, particularly since I'm now older and some of my friends have physical handicaps. They will no longer be able to visit when traffic and parking congestion impacts my street and home. In closing, I want to remind the City Council, this is a working-class neighborhood. As a result, many are unable to attend this meeting and voice their concerns. I hope the City Council will act on behalf of the citizens in this neighborhood and deny the request, the OLS request for abandonment of Lander Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Patrick Jackson.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is Patrick Jackson. I'm a homeowner on Humboldt Street, one south, one block south of Plumas Park. I'm a father, an educator. I have an eight-year-old daughter who attends public school. Most of my points have already been covered, certainly in terms of the actual material harm that would be done to me and my neighbors by the closure of Lander Street. But I would like to clearly state that I view this action as an affront to my neighborhood. My neighborhood is a community that uses and depends on our public streets, including Lander Street and Plumas Park, and that you all as representatives of the city are tasked with promoting and protecting the public good. I see this action on the part of OLS as a private enterprise and because of that, there seems to be a great deal of disjuncture. I think this disjuncture is causing a great deal of mistrust and lack of confidence amongst my neighbors. Certainly, the traffic safety issues have been cited often in what little we have heard from OLS. I would like to point out that OLS has operated as a private school in an urban neighborhood for decades. We deal as a neighborhood with increased traffic on our streets and this traffic is not just restricted, obviously, to Lander Street. We deal with increased parking demands for special events and Sunday services. We deal respectfully and conscientiously with the presence of children in our neighborhood and in our park. As an educator, as a father, I feel that this is the correct way to conduct myself as a citizen. This is why I view this as something of an insult on the part of the school to suggest that sharing is not enough. Now they would like ownership of the street. OLS is obviously, as anybody in our neighborhood knows, in a process of expansion. And when I heard first talk of the abandonment of Lander Street, this is, of course, what first came into my head. It seems that the issues of school expansion are not restricted to solely Lander Street and as a homeowner in the neighborhood, you know, my thoughts go to Plumas Park, the importance of Plumas Park to our community. And, you know, the expansion of the school, while important as a private enterprise, is, has asked for concessions on our part as private citizens. I do wonder when OLS will come asking that they need parts of Plumas Park to ensure the safety of their students. This concerns me deeply. I would like the Council to know, as well as the rest of the city, that as a neighborhood, we will fight to protect our ownership, access to and use of Plumas Park and our streets and our neighborhood. I would thank you very much for your time.
We thank you. Debbie Bowen.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Bane. My family and I live two blocks from the area that's being discussed. We bought a home in this neighborhood in 2008 and we were drawn to this unique urban residential space. First of all, the abandonment threatens the sense of community in our neighborhood and people have talked about this in different ways. It's a space shared by very diverse groups of people. And if the abandonment's approved, all except the church community will be excluded from using the space. Secondly, if children's safety is the primary motivation, and it's not clear to me that that is the case, why doesn't the city address the issue without turning the property over to the school? My daughter is a student at a public elementary school here in Reno and her school, like public schools throughout the Washoe County, does not own and control the street in front of the school. Our public schools have come up with ways to address safety without permanently closing public streets and I guess I, I wonder why should this be different for a private school in our community? And finally, the abandonment would convert public space to private property, also a point that people have made, but I still have, I personally have gone over materials and I still have yet to discover a compelling reason for this. It's not clear how it benefits the city. It's not clear how it contributes to the public good. I respectfully ask that residents be presented with the strong arguments, if they exist, for why this space needs to be permanently turned over and why other options would not sufficiently address children's safety. Otherwise, it would seem that safety is not the only or even primary factor motivating this request and it gives the impression that this is an agreement being made behind the scenes. As residents, we deserve transparency and honesty from those proposing the abandonment and the council members who support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public section now and I'll bring it back to staff and Our Lady of the Snows will have time to speak in just a minute. Staff, or do you want to hear from Snows and then staff? Let's hear from the applicant and then we'll do staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. City Manager. For the record, Garrett Gordon with the Law Firm of Lewis and Roca today representing Our Lady of the Snows. A couple of things. I had a little presentation put together, but I thought I used my time productively in addressing some of the concerns by the neighbors. First, I would just note the abandonment law of this state and of this city, that any abutting owner or local government desiring an abandonment may file an application. So us as Snows are not special. Any property owner abutting a street may in fact submit an application. So that's a law that anyone or everyone can take advantage of so long that the findings are made. And I think that's very important, the findings that the neighborhood brought up. There's one finding for an abandonment, that the public not be materially injured. We've went through now three city council meetings. We went through a neighborhood meeting, went through another neighborhood meeting last night. We had some original conditions. We revised those conditions and this afternoon before you, we've added three more conditions. And they focus on two issues, traffic and parking, which to me is what I hear are the major concerns that cause injury to the neighbors. What are we doing to mitigate those two issues so we're not causing an injury to the neighborhood? Well, one, let's talk about traffic first. We did an original traffic study which showed that there was no impact, no negative impact to the community. At the neighborhood meeting, the community said, wait, hold on a second. The ropes were up during that traffic report and two, it wasn't a traffic report done for a 24-hour period. We acknowledged that and said, okay, we'll go back to the drawing board. So we did a supplemental traffic report that showed two things. One, the ropes were up and it was done for a 24-hour period. And we inserted a camera on one of the stop signs and observed, you know, what really occurs there. And what we found out is there's approximately one car every 15 minutes. And our traffic report and our traffic consultant concluded that that traffic could easily be assumed by Arlington and Plumas that have approximately 10,000 trips a day. So traffic, we believe, has been mitigated. The traffic reports substantiates that, that the public's not harmed by traffic concerns for the abandonment. Number two, parking. Our original conditions included restriping a walker between Humboldt and Plumas, restriping the lot next to the gym, even opening up the lot that's on the corner of Wright Street and Walker to add additional spaces. And we felt there was a net, not even only a wash, but a net benefit for parking spaces to accommodate the 25 that are being lost. Well, you'll see in your staff report today, we submitted a letter two weeks ago in working with staff and hearing from the neighbors that more parking is needed. So a condition of approval is that Snows has to go out and buy a parcel, buy a piece of property, go raise money through donors, buy a piece of property in the vicinity of Snows to accommodate 17 additional parking spaces.
Excuse me. Nobody interrupted you, sir.
We have to show proof of ownership and actually go through the entitlement process. If it's off-premise parking, either a use permit or a variance, but we'll work with staff on that. That's also consistent with and doesn't violate the existing use permit that is out there. So that's a condition of approval. I'd also add, you know, we listened loud and clear last time we were here of a couple of things. One, we want a permanent barrier. That permanent barrier has been installed last week. Two, we want discussion of drop-off zones. Well, you'll see in the conditions of approval, the letter we submitted, we included in the parking agreement that again has to be done before the abandonment's approved, that drop-off areas discussions have to occur. And what we're saying is we have to go to the Parks and Rec Commission and listen to public input. We have to go to the NAB to get more public input on exactly what that will look like. And finally, there's been a lot of concerns about the plan. Let me emphatically say that for the record, Snows has no intent of buying the park or taking over the park. They just want a license to use the park, which is on your agenda in a couple of weeks. No intent to buy or take over the park just to use it like they've been using it for the last 10-plus years. Finally, the plan. Last night at the Park and Rec Commission, we heard, you know what, we want to see your ultimate plan. We want to see what improvements you want to put in. We, someone countered and said, we'd like to hear what improvements you'd like. You know, it's, we gotta raise the money, we gotta put together a donor pool. What would you like? Would you like more dog-walking areas? Would you like playground equipment? You know, what works? So we already worked with, talked with the Director of Parks and Rec this morning. We're going to get on the NAB, we're going to, agenda, we're going to come back to the Park and Rec Commission and listen. What improvements make sense? How can we do this public-private partnership together and make this park better for everyone? And finally, you know, we've acknowledged, I think on the record at community meetings, that our community outreach could be a little bit better. And so we've agreed on the record to this point forward, sending a Snows representative to a NAB meeting at least once a month to listen to concerns, listen to input, go back and certainly have a better dialogue with the neighbors. So I'm here for any questions and I appreciate your time and have a great day. Thank you.
Any other comment from Snows? Okay, staff.
For the record, Bill Gahl, Senior Civil Engineer. This case was presented to City Council on February 8th and there was no decision was made by the council at that time. And due to municipal code, a decision must be made by the council within 60 days and that's why it's brought back to you at this time. Since the original public hearing, city staff and representatives of Snows have begun to work on the proposed conditions of abandonment and clarify some of the other conditions. As Garrett touched on, their letter that they provided with three additional conditions, we have incorporated two of those into our conditions and added one regarding the additional parking spaces that they have to acquire off-site as condition number nine. We have nine conditions of approval in the staff report before you. Additionally, I would like to touch, address a portion of the staff report. The first paragraph of the background section states that 24 public parking spaces on the east side of Lander Street would be eliminated by the abandonment. If the abandonment were approved today and eventually recorded with the proposed conditions, these spaces would not be eliminated and they would be available for the public outside of the school, the times that Lander was closed during school hours. If the council were to approve the abandonment with proposed conditions, Our Lady of Snows would have 12 months to complete several tasks prior to the recordation of the abandonment. These tasks are the barricading and signage for the closure of Lander Street during school hours. This must be approved by Public Works and installed. A parking agreement to provide public access in parking on Lander Street during non-school hours, including the sidewalk easement on the east side of Lander. And that will include a plan for student drop-off, pickup, must be completed, reviewed by Parks and Rec Commission and approved by the City Council. OLS has agreed and will stripe diagonal parking spaces on the south side of Walker Avenue between Humboldt and Plumas Street. And a license agreement for the use of Plumas Park shall be completed, reviewed by Parks and Recreation Commission and approved by City Council. And then that additional condition we've added with OLS will acquire property in the vicinity to provide additional 17 parking spaces and, you know, get the entitlements necessary for that. So staff can support the abandonment with the conditions as written. Julie Conway is here and will discuss the parking agreement that went to Parks and Rec last night. And then myself, since the recent noticing of the abandonment, I've received 11 calls for information for residents and that received notices in the area. Eight of those were opposed to the abandonment and one was in favor. And I'll be available for questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Guston?
Did you want to say something first, Julie, briefly about last night?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't see her. Ms. Conway.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council and City Manager. For the record, my name is Julie Conway, Director of the Parks Recreation Community Services Department. Just by way of background, the license agreement is not on your agenda today for discussion. It was included in your package, just so you know that the city staff are working on that, so that's why it was included in your packet as a draft. I wanted to let you know and has been stated today, the city has had a relationship with Our Lady of Snows in their use of the park since the early 2000s, 2000, around 2002, 2003. That use has been documented and permitted through our electronic registration system and they currently have a permit to use the park for the upper area of the park, the west side of the park, and that is currently in our permit system. We've been advised by the city attorney's office that the more appropriate instrument to use is the license agreement because of the amount of time that they have used it over several years. And so that will be coming back to you on April 25th. And so I just wanted to make clear that that's not before you today, however, it is in the packet. And then the last item, as Bill Gahl mentioned, is that last night, the update to the Recreation and Parks Commission about the improvements to Plumas Park were brought to the commission and in, as part of that discussion, the Lady of Snows representatives were there and public comment was taken. And it was purely and focused on the proposed improvements that have yet to be defined by or identified by the community or Lady of Snows. They have requested, as you have heard, to do some improvements to the area. However, there was no plan presented last night to the commission, but they did talk about it. They wanted to be updated on this because this was brought up to them by Councilman Guston back in December. So the commission asked for an update, so that's why we put it on the agenda. As part of that, the commission did make a motion, and this will be in the staff report for your April 25th meeting, when the license agreement comes back. They did make a motion that was approved by the commission that the license agreement not be executed until such time as there is a plan for the park improvements, that they can have neighborhood improvement, neighborhood input into that plan and have it approved by the commission. However, they also said in their motion that the Lady of Snows should be able to continue use of the park as they have in the past until that plan is done and brought back to them. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and if you have any other questions, I'm here to help you. Thank you.
Mr. Guston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question is, where to start? First of all, that I think we have as many or more people here today than we had on February, and that's the good thing because people obviously are, this neighborhood is important to them. They want input in the neighborhood and what should be done. And we don't see that very often. We see one or two people who are, have a financial interest or involved in some way come before us and talk. come before us and talk about what their needs and wants are. But this is another outstanding turnout. Last night, we had a turnout. I was unfortunately a little bit late, but did get there for the gist of the meeting. My previous meeting was a little bit longer than I anticipated. And I took notes from the people who spoke there. Many of them spoke again today, and the same overriding theme. And I thank those people for being here. No matter which way this comes out, thank you for your interest in the neighborhood. I need to talk to you, Bill, because one of the things that's a trigger mechanism for me, and I think for the neighbors also, is just the term abandonment. I know if I got that in my neighborhood, which is not very far from SNOWS, I don't live very far from SNOWS, and I said something about abandonment, I mean, my antenna would go up right away, and that's a severe, severe word, in my opinion. I've been looking for another word, and I don't want to come up with some synonym that is less transparent. But the reason this is back to us today, you mentioned earlier, and I think this is important for everybody to understand, is that we didn't make a definitive decision in February, but we did make a decision to go ahead and allow SNOWS to block off the street during, between 7:30 and 3:30. But to accomplish that, we need to put the word abandonment in our vernacular as we move forward on this. Is that correct?
No, actually, it's not. Not correct. You know, what we've allowed SNOWS to do is to close the street between 7:30 and 3:30. That's part of our play-street criteria, our play-street code and stuff. They can do that, we can allow that to happen. We've asked that they provide a better, you know, signage and better system of closing off Lander Street during those hours, and they're in the process of working through that. They've installed the construction barricades recently as well to put that in there. The abandonment, it really is, that is, is the abandonment of our right-of-way or our easement. And we have to make a determination on that abandonment 60 days from the public hearing. That's per our municipal code.
When you say make a determination on the abandonment, make a determination on the process we have to go through and the city has to go through for the ultimate abandonment or denial of them?
Well, absolutely. We can abandon, we can approve the abandonment with conditions, and that is our proposal. We have nine conditions of approval in the abandonment request. With those conditions, and one of those is they have 12 months to complete the abandonment. If, for whatever reason, they don't complete those conditions of approval prior to that timeframe, the abandonment cannot be recorded. We will not record the abandonment at this time until they've completed all the conditions of approval. As I mentioned, one of those conditions is come back to council for the use agreement with Parks and Rec. Another condition of approval is to come back to council with the parking agreement that we have proposed, and that parking agreement will stipulate that Lander Street will be open and access for parking outside of the school hours. So, ultimately, with the agreements in place and the conditions of approval completed, we could record the abandonment and the street would split, you know, from center line to west to SNOWS and right to the parks.
I see, I think that's what, in my mind, bothers me a little bit right now, is we're talking abandonment, but the street is open before 7:30 in the morning and after 3:30 on school days, and it's open the other two days on weekends, correct?
It is right now, and it will be with, the parking agreement will basically incorporate those same conditions, so that it would be open through the parking agreement and that we have, that we will come back to council and council will approve.
Okay.
It would remain open for those same timeframes.
Okay, that's where I stumbled with the abandonment, but Mr. Gordon, can I ask you a question? Couple of questions? And I know you heard this last night, you heard this at the first meeting, and you heard it, I think repeatedly. I put some highlights on some of the comments that people who got up and spoke talked about. And they talked about what was the ultimate conclusion, you know, the transparency, the neighborhood plan, et cetera. And you fully understand that by moving, if we move forward today, there are still an awful lot of hoops that you need to go through, and it's not in any way implied that there's a total abandonment if we move forward to try to find out where we are. Because what I really think is, we need to bring this to an ultimate conclusion. You know, we've had two meetings here with the people taking time out of their days, and I'm sure a lot of them work and have other things to do, obviously, but this community is that important to them. So, I think as council, we need to respond and say, okay, let's flush this out and find out where we are. So, you understand that any approval of any kind today is, as Mr. Gahl just said, at least 12 months away or maybe longer, and it's not a fait accompli that just because the ball starts moving, that it will keep moving. It could be halted.
Absolutely, Councilman. If I, just to follow up, we also understand that there's additional NAB meetings we need to go to, additional Park and Rec Commission meetings, additional approvals by this council, and now we have a really good database from our first neighborhood meeting of emails and number, phone numbers from the neighborhood, that we'd like to have informal neighborhood meetings going through this process of soliciting input on the issues.
You know, and that's another point I wanted to bring up because Teresa Hunsacker was right. She talked to me again last night, she had talked to me before the first meeting. She actually gave me her phone number this time because I thought there would be some follow-through, not necessarily from you, but from our staff, to let her know what's going on. But I also understand that staff thought there was not a definitive decision made. It had to come to this meeting to make a decision to move forward. So, I know she was disappointed, but I also know from talking with her, and it's the same kind of theme, there's some people adamantly opposed no matter what would be said, but there's also a theme, it seems to be a majority theme from what I've heard in the community, that they want to be part of this. Now, we can, you and they can agree to disagree on certain things, but they want to, they want to know what the plan is. I know there's some skepticism on their part just by some things were said today. So, they want to be part of it and understand how it benefits them and how it doesn't benefit them. Therefore, do you have any kind of a scenario, timeline right now as to, as the mayor had so strongly requested about the pickup and drop-off zones, the striping, and some of the things that you're gonna have to go through in the next 12 months, if that be the case, that, what is your timeline? What is, what kind of plan do you have in the back of your head, or you can share with people to say, okay, here's how this unfolds in our mind, here's what we think would happen?
I think three things. One, the license agreement, which was important to this body, important to the neighbors, and important as a condition of approval to be vetted, to be vetted, approved, discussed. We've started that process, and we go before, went to the Parks and Rec Commission last night and go before council in a couple of weeks. Secondly, is the comprehensive plan. We were both there last night and heard people would like to know what the idea of the improvements are. We took that language very strongly in that direction, and I spoke with Julie Conway this morning about, okay, let's move forward. How do we have that dialogue? We have some ideas for improvements, but I'm sure the neighbors do as well. And she suggested we get on a NAB agenda right away. We'll be back in Parks and Rec Commission next month to solicit input and start putting together a plan of what improvements could not only help SNOWS, but in fact, help the community. And three, you're absolutely right, that there's a number of conditions that are gonna take a long time to go through, or as you put, hoops. And one of those is that parking agreement, which includes, at the direction of this body, drop-off areas, where those will occur, how those will occur. And we expect, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan concept, to go before the NAB, go before the Parks and Rec Commission, and get feedback on where those drop-off areas should be. Should they be at those intersections? Should they be further east, further west? And so, we expect to have that dialogue and that parking agreement come back to you. I'd hope after, you know, a month or two of meetings with the neighborhood, both formal and informal, like to be back before you in the next, you know, six months.
Okay, and I'm gonna pass, I don't know if you've got Ms. Dodson's list of seven things. They may or may not work, but they're, I don't say a starting point, but they're additional information you might want to put in your portfolio in looking at this. Let's see, just kind of highlighting some of the things the lady said early, I think her name was Liz Boyle, I didn't quite understand, but talking about, you know, tread carefully, and obviously, you need to do that. Parking is a reoccurring theme. I look at all the emails that I have received, and that, we both said this, I guess, but parking seems to be something that people think that if that isn't addressed, they lose out. And this is not something where it should be a lose, it should be a win-win. I don't know that the community would be any better with the abandonment and the park, but I don't know it wouldn't be any better. And so, the discussions we've had, and I said earlier that hopefully, we can bring this to some finality, some conclusion by going through the process. Last time, I wasn't so sure that that was the way to go. I think now it is the way to go, listening to what people are saying, and I, again, I go back to last night, I thought was very interesting that the Parks and Recreation Commission, they were as protective of the neighborhood as the neighbors are. In what they said was really important in the motion, Julie covered the motion, but not, there was one item in the motion that I picked up that was not repeated today, so I'll repeat it. And that is that the commissioner said they would approve the usage or support the usage of Our Lady of SNOWS on an ongoing basis, but not a five-year contract. It would be annually, a one-year contract until, again, you and the people that are involved in it come back and show what the ultimate plan is and how that benefits the neighborhood. Then they would make the determination about either extending it or doing something else. Did you hear the same thing?
I did, and we, I thought that was a fair characterization and a fair comment. And we, like I mentioned before, initially got on the phone with Julie this morning about how to start moving forward in that process for the plan. So, we welcome that input and welcome going back for that commission with a plan in the near future.
Yeah, and I guess you admitted when you were up, and I know how delicate it is, et cetera, but your outreach obviously needs to step it up from here to where it was because the repeated theme, maybe not the exact words, are, you know, what is your ulterior motive? Or what is your plan? And I get the sense from certain people that say that they could support it if they knew, or at least they would have valuable input and tell you why they didn't support it if they knew a little bit better. I think you need to focus a little bit better about how you're gonna go forward and what your steps are, and as you said, going to the NAB and making the appearances, and also being inclusive with some of the people in the community that want to be involved in it. And again, you don't always have to agree on everything, but you have to agree that this is how we're going forward. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm just looking at my extensive notes from this. And again, most of the people that spoke today were there last night. I don't think there was anybody that spoke last night that was not here today. So, I will let other council people ask them questions if they may have.
Ms. Edgar.
I'll go ahead and start with, all right, Garrett, since you're back. When were the, since our February meeting, when everyone was here previously, how many times or when did you meet with the neighbors? We heard that nothing had happened. You made reference to a Parks and Rec meeting last night. Were there any neighborhood meetings just with the neighbors, specifically reached out to them for a meeting prior to last night's Parks and Rec meeting?
Between last council meeting and this council meeting, no, there has not been a neighborhood meeting other than the Parks and Rec Commission and other than us putting together all their comments over the last couple of weeks and working with staff on putting a list together of additional conditions to hopefully mitigate some of those concerns.
I, I'm not sure my memory is totally accurate, but that concerns me a little bit. I thought the direction that we gave was for you to meet with neighbors to work through the issues. So, I'm gonna need to refresh, maybe take a look at those minutes again, but that's a concern to me, that the only meeting that you apparently had with the neighbors was last night prior to today's meeting.
And in response, I don't, with all due respect, don't recall a direct condition to meet with them, but I will say, as far as these conditions for the abandonment, if it goes forward, let's condition us to, you know, have three neighborhood meetings or two neighborhood meetings. I mean, we certainly, honestly and hold heartedly, I have a database from our first neighborhood meeting. Instead of just sending out notices to 750 feet of property owners, which go to who knows where, goes to the owners, our principal hand-walked all those around. So, we have a very good database of everyone who's concerned and interested, and we certainly plan on, as I mentioned before, there's a lot of public process left, and both formal and we plan to, and I'll state emphatically for the record, you know, informal, again, at the church, public process and public hearings, neighborhood meetings to solicit input. And if that's one, two, three, whatever it takes, we're willing to do.
A meeting prior to last night seems appropriate. Enough said on that issue. There was some confusion on the parking lot. You mentioned that you have or will be purchasing property to put a parking lot. Can you, either you or Bill, one of you need to kind of give us a more clear rundown on the exact tit-for-tat on parking? What will we end up with, and where will that lot be, and in what proximity, how many spaces will it accommodate, and what proximity will it be to the church?
Sure. So, in working with staff in the interim here, we asked, in conjunction with the use permit that was approved, how many spaces, if this is abandoned, do we need to replace? And that answer was 17. And we thought we did a good job of finding other solutions of restriping, maybe use the lot on right and Walker, but then realized, you know, we need to just do a new parking lot if we can get this done. So, there are 17 spots, it's not restriping, it's not restriping the gym, it's not opening up our lot. So, that's why that condition was added, that we have to purchase a property within the vicinity that will accommodate 17 brand-new parking spaces. So, that would be a wash. We're saying, on top of that, we're gonna restripe Walker, which is a net gain. We could open up our lot on right and Walker, which is a net gain. And so, certainly at the end of the day, if this is approved, it's approved, it's going to improve the parking situation going forward. And again, that order of abandon, if this is approved today, nothing can happen until we meet all these conditions, including finding a donor and raising some money to buy a piece of property, then going through the entitlement process. So, we'd have to have a special use permit for off-premise parking. That, as you know, goes to planning commission and can certainly be brought up to this body to make sure any concerns of landscaping, et cetera, are covered. So, a lot of public process left with regards to confirming that there is in fact a net, not only a wash, but a net gain in parking.
And when will the lot be completed? Best guess?
To be totally honest, I don't know. I mean, we have a year to meet these conditions. I imagine if this is approved, we'll certainly go start trying to raise money, find the property, you know, negotiate it, and move forward. But again, we have a year to do this. If, for some reason, we can't get it done within the year, we have to come back before you and ask for an extension on that right. So, obviously, we're gonna do our best to get it done within the next 12 months, but at this point, I don't have a firm time frame other than that.
And have you been to a NAB meeting yet?
Yes, we went to the NAB, and you'll see at the back of your staff report, it was actually pretty positive. There were some folks who had some concern.
That was the prior one, though. The one I'm looking at was from November. Have you been since?
We went to the first NAB for this application, correct. There hasn't been a second NAB meeting, no. But there will be for the parking agreement, for the use permit, and for, as we've committed, and we were happy to put it in as a condition, but legally, it doesn't work, but I'm stating on the record today and putting my reputation on the line, that we will have a SNOWS member at NABs, you know, once a month, quarterly, whatever the neighbors want.
Garrett, be careful there. Be careful there, because I did lean over and say to Mr. Guston, when you said that in your earlier presentation, that you made that promise when you were in front of us in February. Now, I understand there's probably only been one NAB meeting since the February meeting, but you did make that promise to us in February. I remember that, and I have confidence you will do that.
I don't recall that, but you, I hear you loud and clear right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Some of the residents, many of them referenced that striping hadn't been done yet. I don't recall if that was expected in this interim time. Was that an expectation that we put forward from our February meeting?
That was, that was one that I requested that they go ahead and do, is get the restriping gun down at the gym and on the side streets, get that restriping, and restripe their present parking lot and get it set up. That was, that was a request of mine. It was not a, it was not an order or anything else.
I'm gonna agree with the mayor on that. It was a request, and that's the way it was put in the clerk's letter, that it was a request that they do that.
Okay, that's what I needed to be reminded of. I couldn't recall.
But I will make the request again, but it'll be with a little more emphasis this Come on up.
Garrett, do you have something on that?
I do, on the striping. Again, Garrett Gordon for the record, we have contracted, contacted the contractor, we do have a bid, we met with the city as far as getting a permit to do it. We're told by the contractor, we need the weather to frankly get a little bit better, that there's been a lot of precipitation, and that it should be done going into the spring when the weather is a little bit warmer. So, we've certainly taken all the steps, again, have a bid, working with the city to pull a permit, that that will get done.
Oh, so, probably in the next 30 days, it'll be done? Thank you. That was a little hint.
Chief? Chief, a question for you, please. After our February hearing, we received a memo from you, from the department, having gone out and assessed the situation. And it pretty much validated the congestion and parking and safety concerns that the residents had expressed, that it was, I should have brought your memo, but it's something to the effect of, the parents really are creating a problem with their double parking and in red zones, and we have the pictures of that here today, parking in the wrong direction. So, since your evaluation and today, where's your position on the impacts and the safety concerns and mitigations?
Thank you. I'm Steve Pitt, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department. I'd like to preface my comments and observations and really surround three issues. The first is, our analysis is based on overall public safety, okay? And we all understand what that is. The second thing is, is we embrace, really, community policing and problem solving. It's trying to get the community involved in helping solve problems similar to this, and this is fairly complex. And the third thing is, really, how do you conduct an alternative analysis of a recommendation like this? And what I'll tell you, and I do actually have that report on my phone, so I apologize, Ms. Edger, it's in very small font. But our observations over several days were that, you know, many of the parents, you know, it was practice and behavior they had engaged in and probably for years, and they would come in, and we had to do many interventions. I would say probably a couple of dozen. We actually discussed at the Reno Police Department, maybe a form of enforcement? I mean, would that help send a message that this is a real issue we need to address? And I didn't recommend that. I thought that we needed to continue to work with the parents, the school, and then those in the community that wanted to work with us. And you obviously have a large contingent of the community here today, so my comments may not be very popular with one group or the other, but they're just the facts. We made six recommendations in that report you're referencing, and many of those are in Bill's report. I actually heard some comments today from the community that I believe are relevant, and maybe we need to look at some, making some of those additions to our recommendations. But on that third piece I talked about, and prefacing my comments, I think with these types of tough issues, if a decision's made today to move forward, I think there needs to be a condition, or maybe an adaptability clause. And I apologize, Garrett, I'm not an attorney, and I'm definitely not an engineer, but when you start changing, all right, traffic flow and behavior in any geographical area, you're going to have consequences that were predictable, and you're going to have consequences that weren't that predictable. And so, I think if we could develop some adaptability or conditions to make sure that we work as a community and local government to address those as we move through this process, I guess, over the next year, that would be my recommendation. Because really, what you do is you begin to solve a problem as it exists, instead of saying, look, we've agreed to these conditions, and that's all we're going to stick with. And I hope that helps answer that question, now.
You know, we had the same problem at Roy Gump, when they had, and the chief set a couple of bikes out. I live out that way and drive through it, and they really straightened up a lot out there. There's not as many U-turns and double parks and stuff like that, man.
And is your evaluation that pickup zones that are proposed, that those will adequately accommodate?
Our evaluation in the February 27 staff report clearly states that just an abatement of that area is not going to solve the problem. And we made five other suggestions, and that's, some of that is in the report. And so, I believe that a combination of those things and maybe a working group to analyze this in a series of phases over the next year to assist everybody involved would be my recommendation. It's just basically based around solving problems, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doritz, you have anything? Mr. Head chef?
This would be for staff. We had a discussion last time. We originally had done an abandonment for the existing school spaces based on a special use permit. If these parking spaces go away at some time in the future, what's plans, I don't know if I heard a satisfactory answer last time, those, that special use, they'd be in violation of their special use permit if those parking spaces go away. So, what, how is staff going to address that?
And that was the addition of the 17th parking spaces in condition number nine. If they, if the abandonment happens and we have the parking agreement in place, and the way that condition is read, let me make sure I reference it properly, that the end of that condition, on condition six, and the parking agreement shall terminate in the event OLS obtains ownership of the abandoned area in its entirety, which would require, you know, city council approval and so on. At that point, that whole area would be, if the parking agreement is terminated, those spaces would no longer be available. They would be 17 spaces short. And that's why we've asked that they obtain those 17 spaces before we even get to the point of recording the abandonment, so they would not be in violation.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure, I know the 17 spaces were dedicated, so the way staff is viewing it is that, and that all has to happen before the recordation of the abandonment, that the way staff is viewing it, that would make up the deficient parking spaces once those spaces were abandoned.
That is correct.
And then, if this abandonment goes forward, doesn't, because the city owns the park, correct?
They do.
So, the half of the abandoned area that's in the staff report would revert to the city, correct?
It would.
So, they only, they're only looking at half of Lander, basically?
Yeah, they're looking from the center line over, would be to the, to Snows.
And then, again, to confirm, there is no abandonment until all of these conditions occur, including the license or use agreement for the park coming back to us, which we can approve or disapprove in our absolute discretion. The same thing would apply to the parking agreement.
That's correct. Both agreements would have to be approved prior to the abandonment being recorded.
And then, have you seen Ms. Dotson's letter dated April 3, 2012?
I have not.
Okay. Well, in response to Councilman Guston's point, I think a lot of her suggestions are pretty good. And from my perspective, they would be folded into the parking agreement about no park zones on, no parking zones on Lander, between Walker and Monroe, having designated, you know, drop-off area, traffic crossing guards program, I mean, a variety of things that I think was, the chief was trying to address, that would allow us to true-up and tweak this as this process moved forward. So, I would request that maybe when we get to the motion, if we get to a motion, that if that, if we go forward with this abandonment, that these suggestions be incorporated, it seems like in the parking agreement or someplace in the process.
Okay.
the sidewalk will remain open, correct? Even if this goes forward, the sidewalk area, we still retain and always leave that area open?
The sidewalk, well, with the abandonment, that sidewalk becomes part of the park parcel.
Correct.
It's city property, but as part of the parking agreement, there was an intention to make sure that that easement for that sidewalk is maintained, and that will maintain for all time, yes.
And then, based on the chief's comments, in the prior staff report, this staff report, there were concerns with respect to fire and police. Have those all been resolved?
And there, the fire did not, did not provide us with any comments that they would have any issues with the abandonment. They can service the structures from the streets, north and south, from Walker and Monroe, without getting on Lander Street.
And there's nothing in this approval today, if we move forward with the abandonment, that gives Lady of Snows any right to our half, correct?
There's nothing in the approval.
And they would have to come back and, I believe what's contemplated, and maybe this is addressed in condition two, that we, there has to be some kind of fair market, there has to be a fair market appraisal before they could even move forward with a purchase agreement with the other half.
I'm going to defer that either to legal or to Julie, if they have an answer on, that'd be a remnant parcel, I believe.
Okay. So, in other words, if, that'd be correct? So, if they never even came to us in the future and said, we would like to make an arrangement and acquire the other half, then it stays as is? I mean, the sidewalk is open, we have an easement, basically, it's almost the same situation we currently have?
Yeah, that becomes part of the parcel and the city's property, yes.
The sidewalk stays open all the time.
Exactly.
No matter what.
Well, I mean, ultimately, I think what I'm hearing from the neighbors is that if there's potentially another issue, which means Snows could come back and say, we want to buy the city's half, and at that point, they would own the entire stretch of Lander Street. And at that point, if there was a closure, then, and they did something in the street area, for example, put a playground, I don't know, but if they did something, then at that point, it would be closed. But that's not part of today, and that means they would have to come to the city sometime in the future, and we would have to agree to it.
That's exactly correct. It's not part of today's, and it would be subject to the state laws regarding sales of real property.
And at that point, we could condition another traffic study, we could do pretty much what we ever, what we wanted to do, correct?
It's our property, we can do what we want with it at that point, yes.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Ozzy, you have anything?
Yes, sir. A few questions. Mr. Van Ladegraff, you only got through about half of your comments. I'm curious what other conditions that you were concerned about here. You got through the police and fire and impairing their ability?
Well, thank you, Ms. Ozzy. The present proposal increases the risk of harm to the kids with the parents dropping off and picking up on Walker and Monroe, instead of just on Lander Street, using Ms. Dotson's ideas about traffic drop-off and pickup. There's no need to give ownership of the street, of Lander Street, to a private entity in order to promote safety of the students. There's no need for an abandonment. Why should the city give up ownership of the street? We gave up ownership of the parking so they could satisfy a special use permit, and under condition four of that special use permit, they still didn't perform that. The church parking lots are private, they're not open to the public. The public, you could lose the use of the church or school side of the parking if an abandonment of that street is approved. We'll no longer be able to drive on that street, is that the consequence? But we'll be able to use the half of the street for driving and bicycling that's closest to the park.
That's what I'm assuming.
And that's what I'm assuming, but then we only have half of a street, and we're still driving in front of the school, so why go forward with the abandonment? Now, at the last meeting in February, it would say, it was said that there would be a parking agreement in place. There is no parking agreement in place. Does the parking agreement give the city and the public the right to use the OLS side of the street parking? Or does it give OLS the right to use the city side of the street parking to count for their parking requirements? We don't know, because it hasn't been answered in 60 days. It should have been here already. The license agreement is only replacing the fee agreement that already exists. It contains nothing more. I've seen a draft of it. It doesn't discuss anything else other than we have the right to use the park during these hours, just like we always have, and we pay $1,800. So, that's not anything that gives the city something more or addresses the material harm to the city should we give away ownership of half of the street. So, today, you can say, we deny ownership of half of the street being abandoned, and the other part being abandoned but owned by the city as a park, and the school students are still protected, their public safety is still in place, and they can still block off the street under the city's street permit process. You don't need an abandonment for the church and the school to be able to use the facility in conjunction with all the rest of us as users, and allow the city just to be the owner of the property and the street and maintain it as it always has. And so, the, thank you for the opportunity to say that. What is accomplished by abandonment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Moran, was she still here?
Yes, she is.
Okay. She just mentioned that this would increase the danger to children. I want her to elaborate why she thought that would be. So, Mr. Gordon, let me ask you, what is, it's a good question, abandoning half the street, what's the purpose? What happens here?
Sure. The purpose is solely to create a safe zone. Every other district, every other school in this district has a safe zone around their elementary or middle school. So, there's certainly intent to, one, abandon the side of the street, which will not occur until a parking agreement is complete. And just to answer a couple of the gentleman's questions, the intent is absolutely to have the street closed during school hours but open. So, the public would have a right to go on our side of the street, and of course, the public will remain, have the remaining right to go on the city's side of the street. So, it'll be open for parking and access, non-school hours, weekends, and holidays.
So, is that going to be part of the parking agreement or part of the title change that the city will retain an easement?
Parking agreement.
Okay.
Of course, which has to occur before the abandonment's recorded.
And that was my next question, because a lot of things, people were saying, there's no parking agreement for us to look at, but the abandonment does not happen until there's a parking agreement.
Correct.
What processes, you might have said it three or four times, but to get the parking agreement, do these people have input on that parking agreement? Or is that something done by staff, and it's just completed? Or is that done, has to come back to council?
At the very least, it has to go to a NAB, go to the Park and Recs Commission, which we put in here as a condition, and then come back to city council. But, you know, we'll certainly, you know, have an informal meeting to solicit more feedback, and I think it's a very good idea. I sat with the lady after, I think, who compiled those bullet points last night in the parking lot for about an hour, and she has a lot of great points. So, I'm certainly acknowledge and agree to, hopefully, we can build a lot of that into the parking agreement.
And you were asked about the timeframe to get the abandonment done. What's the timeframe for the parking agreement, you think?
We have to get everything done within a year. So, you know, certainly, we're going to roll up our sleeves and get started right away. You know, we'd like to at least be at next month's NAB to have an informal discussion and maybe an outline of what we're thinking, solicit feedback, and continue down that process. Maybe the next Park and Recs Commission after that, and maybe midsummer be before you, at my best guess.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Guston.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate everybody's input and comments about this. You know, the easy way out is to turn this down, but, you know, I've been here almost eight years now, and this is probably the fourth time I've heard this. I think, I think if we don't proceed, we'll never have an answer. I think I'm just kicking the can down the road to a future council to get some kind of conclusion on this. And I said earlier, we need some ultimate conclusion on this, whether it's going to benefit the neighborhood, not benefit the neighborhood, it's going to pass, it's going to come back, whether the council will deem it appropriate to go ahead and do it or not do it. And I think it's unfair to maybe to pass that on to another council. I think we have heard this, I think people have spoken what they think. I do think there's a willingness to find a way to work, to make this work for the neighborhood and for the church. If there isn't, then I'm dead wrong about that, but I have faith in what people said today, last night, and in February. So, my conclusion is to move to approve the staff recommendation, to fold into that the additional conditions today about the parking, the traffic, and the fact that there's no intent to take over the park in any way, to take Ms. Dotson's recommendations to be evaluated and to determine if they should be part of the parking plan, to, again, the last time I know, Councilman Zedger will say it, and I'll just repeat it, is that the outreach and the information circulated to the community, and especially these residents, has to be stepped up and intensified, and has to have a real significance to a positive outcome. If the positive outcome is not to do it, that's fine. If the positive outcome is to go ahead, that's fine, too. But there are just too many people who are, who are intrinsically involved in this, I guess is the best way to say that, because it's their neighborhood, it's important to them, it's important to all of us. So, you need to be very respectful and very open about what your ultimate plans are, what your comprehensive plans are, how you're going to solve the parking issues that, I know when there are services at the church, maybe there's a, during one of the homilies or multi-homilies, the priest's got to tell the people, you know, when you're just coming in, if you come in late, you're parking in front of some neighbor's place, or you're blocking their driveway, you can't do that. If you're a good Christian, you don't want to do that. And I think you need to tell people that it's more than just going to church and then leaving and going someplace else. You have to be good stewards of what you do in that neighborhood and to the people that live there. So, you know, it'd be easy to say no, but this will just resurface again, because you have two sides who have some opposing views, and they think they're... have two sides who have some opposing views, and they think they're, they're right, but we need to get an ultimate conclusion. I've said that three times. I won't say it again. But to, some finality to this. And I think by moving forward with this, and again, I hesitate using the word abandonment, because that just, that just doesn't sit in my craw about its abandonment, when yet there are still a lot of steps that need to be taken for this to move forward and the ultimate Plan B as, as, at least verbally outlined, not specifically outlined by the church. So those, that's my recommendation, and that's my motion. I think I included everything. Mr. Hasjeff?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second it for discussion. The one thing I thought the chief brought up that is important, there may be some tweaks and true-ups that law enforcement will have to proceed with. So as I understood the chief's comments, we would add a condition that law enforcement could review, you know, the parking, the drop-off zones, and be able to tweak whatever that plan is with law enforcement's input.
I appreciate you mentioning it, because he did. I wrote the, some of the notes down as the chief talks, the condition of the traffic flow and the consequences to the closure. I think that's what we need to have in this, also this motion, the consequences to the closure and how that affects the traffic flow. Is that, did I characterize that right, Chief? No? Thank you.
And then, for, for purposes of comment, when this came before us before, I was on the fence, I, I didn't really think that the applicant would adequately mitigate the loss in parking. And to respond to Mr. Van Lantograph's comments, I mean, what's the difference? You can accomplish the same thing without the abandonment. But I think there are two, there really are two important differences. And one is, by virtue of the church going out and buying the additional parking, at the end of the day, we have a net increase in parking, which not only benefits everyone, but also benefits the park users, particularly on the weekend. And then ultimately, what's contemplated here is some improvements to the park, which we'll be able to structure through the, through the use agreement and the license agreement, which we wouldn't otherwise potentially get. So to me, those are two important differences, and that's why I'm going to support the motion.
Have a motion. Second, Mr. Azzi?
Yeah, thank you. And, Councilman Guston, I'm having a few questions on Condition Nine about acquiring the other property. Was that a condition that they'd have to do that outside the parking agreement, or is that part of the parking agreement? Or is that to satisfy an earlier condition? Because to me, it might be more offensive to me if I lived there, that someone's going to buy the house next door to me and tear it down and build a parking lot. Well, you know, I, I can understand that, and that's why it needs to come back, because what happens is that there's another linchpin on this that, that I presume the applicants have considered. They need a special use permit to do that. I, I heard briefly talking about landscaping, but to answer your original question is, I think it speaks to the issue that some of the other people talked about, whether it's a funeral, or whether it's Palm Sunday that somebody mentioned, that Easter, Palm Sunday, Christmas, that's when people usually go to church. I mean, there are more people that go into church in those days, and the more parking they have to accommodate, not so much what's happening at the school, but happening at the church itself, I think will ultimately benefit the neighborhood. And my only question that is, should that be folded into the parking agreement so everybody has discussion about that? I think it should. As opposed to just, as opposed to just making it a condition so that everyone will have more input about maybe which parcel or, or how it's going to happen. Maybe the neighbors will, will say, we'd rather lose the 17 spaces than to lose this house. Well, I think from that standpoint, if they would, I, I, that's not the sentiment I get from the neighbors. The neighbors don't think there's enough parking now. Unless you're next door to them. Yeah. But folding it into the parking agreement, I have no problem with making that condition part of it. So it doesn't mean that they don't have to do it, but it would be, if that's what everyone agrees to, that that's what they would do. So it wouldn't change really what happens. Right.
Well, with one, you're not suggesting that it not be a requirement prior to the order of abandonment. It should still be a...
If it's part of the parking agreement, which is a requirement prior to the abandonment...
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that is part of the agreement.
Okay.
But here, they'd have to do it outside the agreement, which means they would just have to do it, and it might not necessarily come back. They could do it tomorrow.
Yeah, but remember the dynamics here, because the additional 17 spaces goes to cure any deficiency they may have with the existing SUP.
Correct.
So if, let's say the neighbor said, we don't want it, we don't want you to buy the additional parking spaces. I don't know how they solve their current SUP then, because that's a condition to their current SUP.
I, I don't know either, but I, I agree with them that it should be looked at in total rather than just specific to here. Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll also support this, because it doesn't do anything yet. It sort of...
Exactly.
...tries things, and we'll see how it goes. Every school has the same problem. I mean, the lady up here today showed pictures of schools, a school just a couple blocks away, has the same loading and unloading problem. They, they all have the exact same issue, and we have to deal with every one of them. But some of these, these conditions here, I think, would help. And I think this just gets us to, to maybe an answer, but we can also say no later on. Yeah, and that's why I really, again, I, I said this before, and I'm sorry, I, the word abandonment just doesn't characterize it in the right way for me. I understand that's what the technical term the city has to use and move forward, but, but by no means, and I, I've mentioned this before, this is not a done deal in terms of abandonment. There are, there are a lot of hoops to go through, and people have to make sure that the applicant has to make sure that these things are satisfied. And, you know, time's over now. We, we, if, if the vote is positive, we go ahead and give you the opportunity, but there won't be a second. I mean, you need to make this, you need to make this right with the community and with the church, and make it a better place, not a worse place.
Do you have another question?
My last point was, unless Councilwoman Zadri's going to bring it up, she had mentioned that maybe we require the applicants to have a minimum number of times they met with the, with the neighborhood instead of just...
Ms. Zadri?
Well, and that is part of...Mr. Guston, I, I totally agree that we've, we've heard about the request and the potential for a, a number of years. And that's wearing on the residents as well as, as the church. I, I totally understand that. The structure that's being talked about now and supported in the motion really isn't giving them approval to do anything other than to go forward and prove to the neighbors that they can meet the standards of that parking structure. The public outreach from what's been described to us from the citizens and, and actually admitted to by you, Mr. Gordon, has been inferior, I think. And yes, I think that we do need to put a minimum of, that there will be at least two public meetings before that parking agreement comes in, which is really kind of the trigger point for this being approved or not. It may sound like an approval is, is happening today, and nothing's going to change unless they can come forward and prove to you that they will abide by all of those conditions. As uncomfortable as it is, I think that the residents deserve some certainty that it's just not going to continue to come up and raise its ugly head and annoy them. The proof is on you now. If, if, if this motion passes, the proof is on you. All we're giving you today is the authority to prove that you could do what you say you're going to do. And if you don't, then you don't go forward, and at least the residents have some closure, that it's not going to happen and won't continue to nag at them. But yeah, two meetings, please, minimum of two. That aren't a public Parks and Rec Committee meeting the night before you come to the council.
Mr. Mayor, most of my comments have been said. I mean, but I, I do think the key to this moving forward today is the fact that basically is what we've, we're telling them, the applicant is, go solve the issues that everyone's brought up, bring it back to us in a plan, and we'll look at it. I mean, that's really where we're at today, is, is, is go, go see if you can solve these issues that the neighbors have brought up, and then bring it back to us. And, and, and the task is on them to, to, to work through that now. So...
Okay. Any other comments? Have a motion?
Mr. Chair, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. There was discussion on the side about adding to the motion, but there wasn't a formal action by the, by Councilmember Guston and the second to add those items to the motion. So if you decide to do that, we would recommend that you, you do that as part of your proceedings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. We, I would add the, the addendums to the motion as stated by Councilwoman Azzi and Councilwoman Zadri. And Councilman Hasjeff?
He's okay. All right. I have a motion. I have a second.
Mr. Mayor, might I take the...
No, you can't say anything. You can come up to the microphone and say something, but you're going to only say it up here. No, sir. No, sir.
Actually, I was simply going to ask if I could come up in the microphone. Could I stick a stab at answering since the lady left, Mr. Azzi, Commissioner, Councilwoman Azzi's question about...
If it's short and sweet. We've heard enough public comment, and we're going to go forward and do...
Okay. Well, Mr. Councilwoman Azzi had questions about the idea of the present situation or the projected situation being more dangerous for the kids. And I've been directly across from Snow's, Catty Clarniff, across from Snow's for 25 years. I've watched the situation. I've watched the situation that's developed in the last two months since February 8th, and it is massively more dangerous for the children. People talk about a drop-off pickup zone. Well, Lander Street is a block-long drop-off pickup zone.
Okay.
All that crazy maelstrom that existed there because the church and the city never really tried to control it anyway, and during the, during the...
Okay.
Especially the pickup zones.
All right.
Has now been exported out onto two other streets that were already busier than Lander Street is, and now you have, I mean, every day I watch young children, unescorted, try to walk across this automotive jungle with people, as people said, making U-turns, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see how that can possibly be considered safer for the children than simply trying to solve Lander Street as a better pickup area.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Call the public comment, and we're going to, yes?
I guess one of my answers to that, Mr. Mayor, is we don't know how many kids walk to school every day.
Right.
That's not true. That's not true.
But when I do think to address his, the gentleman's concerns, what Betty Dotson put in her memo, I think goes a long way to try to address those concerns. So, and that's been incorporated in the motion, so that, that will come back to us, because I think those will relieve, relieve the pressure on the neighborhood and those adjoining streets.
Okay.
We need to give, we need to give great recognition to Betty Dotson. You did, I don't see you out there.
She just hadn't.
You did, you did a very good job in, in trying to, to find resolve for, for both sides. Thank you.
I'll let you come up and ask one question. I'm not opening the public comment section. We've had an hour of comments, and we're not going to...
Thank you, Your Honor. I missed the motion. I'm just asking, could you restate the motion?
Boy, you really think we're good, don't you?
The motion was to...
We, we...
Approve staff recommendation with some additional recommendations. Obviously, Ms. Dotson's motion, memo, rather, be included in the parking study, that the chief's comments about the consequences of the traffic flow, the... Two meetings.
The NAB?
The NAB meetings and the, the community meetings be part of the outreach.
And then that the 17 spaces be part of the parking agreement as well as...
Right. And if you need a copy of the motion, you can pick up one later from the Secretary's office, and you can get verbatim what was, what was said. All right.
And Councilman Azzi wanted to incorporate the additional 17 parking spaces into the parking agreement as well.
Right.
I just said, yeah.
Okay. I have a motion and second. Any further discussion from council members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote unanimously. Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate it very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, now we'll go to item F2.
No, you can't right now. Yeah, well, it's pretty big.
He won it right now. Oh, he's, thank you.
Okay.
I know.
All right. Now we'll go to item F2. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Proper notice was given. No correspondence was received.
Okay. All right. We have a staff report. Huh? I'm not sure we need it. Yes. Somebody want to give me a motion? Or do you want a staff report?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm moved to uphold the recommendation to planning commission.
Okay. Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F3. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, we have an item F2-1, the resolution. Would you like to backtrack to that, sir?
Yeah, I guess you could, because I just went right by that, didn't I?
Resolution number 7680, resolution to amend resolution number 5673 by adopting a change to the land use plan of the Reno master plan as approved in case number LDC 11-00036.
Moved to approve?
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Secretary on item F3, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Proper notice was given. We received one letter in opposition from Rick Angold.
Okay. We have three people's ways to speak. Kimberly Rodemeyer.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Kim Rodemeyer, and I'm a board member of the Upper Southeast Communities Coalition. This coalition is comprised of seven HOAs, the owners and residents of a mobile home park, and a cohesive group of homeowners that are represented in our group by their community liaison. We have eight board members and 30 working group members and represent over 3,200 people. It is our understanding that the owner of this parcel is a lifelong resident of the Truckee Meadows. If that is the case, then the owner was well aware of what he was buying when he purchased this land several years ago. In his lifetime, there have been six 100-year floods, 1950, 55, 63, 65, 86, and 97, on the Truckee, the Steamboat Creek, or the Boynton Slough, or all at the same time. People died in every one of these floods. This land was flooded every time. Since the 1997 flood and the beginnings of the Truckee River Flood Project, this land has been designated as flood storage for the safety of not only the surrounding communities, but for the entire Truckee Meadows. The previous land use, a Gulf Driving Range, complemented the designation of flood storage. The planner would argue that since 1997, the surrounding area has changed. Land uses have changed. First, we would like to stress that comparing west of McCarran with east of McCarran is like comparing bananas and elephants. The differences between them are vast, and the designated uses could not be further apart. For now, I would like to talk about the change that has occurred on the west side of McCarran from our perspective. Let's start with the cottages. The developer intentionally and blatantly bought, brought in a footmore fill for those pads, knowing that the fine would be cheaper than paying for additional mitigation. $50,000 that went into the city's general fund, never to be seen by Southeast Reno with the hopes of counteracting the additional floodwaters into the surrounding residents due to this action. The FedEx has put in a roughly three-to-five-foot berm around several sides of its facility, and it has no flood retention areas. I fail to see how the city protected the surrounding residents with that approval. The Quick Stop Mini Mart has a mini berm that, around the building, as well with their landscape configuration and no flood retention areas. Again, how does that protect surrounding residents? The commonly referred to Buck Bean Building has a really cute little flood retention area practically on the banks of the Boynton Slough. It has water in it 365 days of the year. It is a small pond. It's totally useless in flood retention. The flood project has just recently found out that the Army Corps of Engineers is only going to pay for matching funds for a 50-year level of project, protection project. Those of us at the working group meeting when that was reported found out that the plan now calls for more levees and floodwalls for the consequences will now be higher water south of the river and east of McCarran. Example, 100-year flood will have 117-year water. Yet we now have less than half of the available flood storage we had in 1997. The owner of this land, the owner, the owner knew this land flooded and was designated flood storage for the benefit of the entire Truckee Meadows when he bought it. It was not a secret. The master plan should not be amended to allow any development in this area. The current designation was there when he bought the property. He should have planned accordingly with his uses or not bought it at all. Thank you very much.
Karen Wood?
I'm out.
Okay. Jim Wood?
My name is Jim Watke. We own the property adjacent to Bill Mank, we own the property in corner Pembroke on McCarran. And I've been here for 78 years, and the, as long as I've been around here, and the floods have been, the area's always been flooded, and it'll continue to be flooded, no matter how they want to interpret it as 100-year flood or whatever it is. When there's flood, that is flooded. The property, like I say, Bill's a lifelong member here, and like I said, he knows exactly what it is, and he's doing anything he can to develop the land. If they do develop the land, it's going to put us, we're in a bad place right now, because we get the flood from south to north. And if he develops that land, that's going to put us right in a, in a pocket there to where if the water's just going to sit there and swirl. swirl and not go anyplace. And the, the land, any way that he can get an opening in there, no matter what it is for, even if it's just to put a dog kennel in there, that's going to open it up for him to get in there and figure out some way to get his storage units or whatever it is in there. And you look on that side of the street, that whole side of the street is all beautiful farmland, there's deer, there's cows, it's beautiful country out in there, and we sure in the hell don't need a damn storage unit there, and I sure in the heck don't want one in my backyard to look at. And nobody, it's funny, everybody is trying to figure out some way to sell you people on how he can develop that land and make us all beautiful and whatever have you, but you know, nobody's come to our place and said, "Well, hey, here's what we're going to do to help you and make your land so beautiful and nice, because I'm going to develop all this and I'll have a nice monthly income, and what do I care about you?" Personally, not a damn thing. But I, it, just, I'll sell you the fact that I'm going to do this and do that, then nobody's ever come to offer us a damn thing or tried to help us or develop our land, so we're out of the flood area too. But if I can cause you problems and you get flooded, that's your problem. You go take care of your own problem, because as long as I get what I need, that's all the main problem, is all I care about. So, do I want it there? No, no way, shape, or form. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name, sir. I didn't read it right at first when you introduced yourself, and I apologize for that. Alright, having no other public comment, I'll bring you back to the table for discussion.
I, I do have a question for Kim.
Okay.
Because this is in Councilperson Sforaz's ward.
Yes.
Is she aware of your continued concerns?
Yes.
Alright. And you don't think that the, the change in zoning, because usually what we'll, we'll be able to do, look at the volume replacement, the one-to-one in our code requirements when we have a specific project, because really now this is just a zoning change? So, we'll have, we'll have that opportunity. I mean, just because he gets a zoning change doesn't mean he can build anything within that flood area. Is it, you still have concerns?
I do have concerns, because the surrounding businesses that were built all have supposedly had mitigation too, and, and they don't work. So, our concern is, is that this mitigation that will come up in the future, if it's, if this is changed to an SPA, it will obviously, there's only two things that they could ask for, and one is open space and the other is a PUD. So, they're going to obviously go for a PUD, and if they do go for.
You mean, you mean a PUD or a special planning area?
Well, after, after the, if they do get a special planning area, the only two things they can ask for after that is either open space or a PUD. And so, the PUD, we might be able to condition it at the wazoo, but that's not going to guarantee that we're going to be protected.
Yeah, but PUDs zoning, so I'll, I'll have staff follow up on that.
So, yeah, we're, we still have concerns with, with anything that going in there at all.
Do you know if these other businesses paid for offsite?
It's my understanding.
My understanding is they did, and I'm just wondering if you had something different.
I, I just know that the cottages paid the fine instead of paying for the mitigation.
But I also heard they had paid for mitigation to take land out and put land in and stuff like that.
It could be, but from what I understand, that was before the, the, the change in the code where you had to do it in the same watershed and the same, I think it, it's somewhere else. It's not in that particular area, is what I understood.
Yeah, that's my next question for staff, is, I know we changed our volume replacement code, we, we, we made the requirements stricter. What, were those prior developments under the old code or this new one with the stricter requirements?
The, the new, the new code is about a year and a half old, so all those.
All those other ones were?
Yeah, and I, I can't be certain that those were actually in, in our current flood zone, in flood zone one, without looking at the map, so. But regardless, they were developed prior to our current one-to-one mitigation and flood zone code.
Now, would you answer, Vern, answer the question with respect to the, if, if we move forward with the special planning area, are there only two options, open space or PUD?
Those are the two zoning designations that comply with the special planning area.
Special planning area, okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Assey?
With this designation, are they allowed to build anything that they can't build right now?
Very close, Senior Planner. With the proposed designation, it's not going to, it's not going to change what they can do right now, because it's not changing the zoning. There are open space and UT40 right now.
So, they have to come forward with a better plan to get any changes in what they could build, and they'd have to address all these issues, wouldn't they?
That's correct, either through zoning and/or subsequent special use permits.
So, what's their advantage to doing this? Why, why, why are they taking this step?
What it does is allow them to apply for a PUD. Open space and PUD are the only two conforming zoning districts. So, a PUD would allow a, a more specific project to be brought forward to address all the, the issues that are.
And we could also put a lot of conditions on a PUD, correct?
Conditions, standards, whatever's, you know, necessary.
Correct.
To mitigate those concerns.
Any other questions?
No, I stand corrected. I kept saying zoning, but I, it's not zoning, it's a master plan.
Master plan, yes.
Any questions, anybody?
Well, I mean, I'm concerned that Councilman Sforaz is not here, it's her ward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Mike Rayly with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of the Manki Family Trust. This property's actually come through this process two times prior, and we went back through and read all the, the concerns, and I've, I've met with Kim, and I've met with the Walkies, and Kim is, I think, the, the encyclopedia for flood knowledge in that area. I, I don't dispute her, her, her accounts of the flooding conditions. I've also met with Terry Thomas, who represents the East Side Homeowners subdivision, just to the south. We know we have our work cut out for us, and if you go back and look through the minutes of when this came back through before, we had requested a mixed residential designation, and that implied that certain things were allowed by right under that, or certain zoning categories were, would conform and then potentially allow for uses by right without any subsequent approval, and that's why we're taking the approach that we are now, if I can get the It shows that really, special planning area, it, no matter what, we have to come back through, and I can argue that with a PUD, you can set standards and, and, and conditions that are much higher and above what typical code would require. And it's kind of like the, the comment that Mr. Guston made on the last case regarding the amendment, and I kind of chuckled, it's, we, we've been kicking the can, what we're really asking for is a chance to present our plan, to give a plan that can be conditioned and can stand on its own merits, and you may decide that it, that that doesn't work, but we, we want the opportunity to do that. You know, we have committed at the NAB, I've committed to Ms. Rodemeyer and Ms. Thomas personally, we committed at the planning commission, that long before anything ever even sets, sets foot into the doors of community development, we will have neighborhood meetings to discuss the, the issues and to incorporate those into our plan. We, we, we have heard loud and clear through this process that there are significant issues that we need to address, and this is simply just the first step. And if you, really, if you look at the, the designations around us, we have special planning area on three sides, all the university property and the property on the west side of McCarran, and I, and I also agree with Ms. Rodemeyer, there is a definite distinction between uses on east side of McCarran and the west side of McCarran, and that's something that the PUD will account for as well, so.
No, thank you. You should talk to your neighbor also.
Yep, absolutely. We've, we've spoken with the Walkies as well.
Make sure you visit one. Chair, enter, enter motion.
Well, I, I, I mean, does anybody know how Councilman Sforaz feels about this? I mean, I would.
She didn't say anything to me.
I, I spoke to her about it, but this is going to come back to us for a second reading, I, I think, so, and I'm pretty sure she'll be here.
Sorry to come up on, on this, but we, after the NAB meeting, I have spoken with Councilwoman Sforaz, and we, we, I basically told her just that, what I expressed to you, and, because she had significant concerns about coming back with a, a commercial or a mixed residential master plan designation. I did speak with her briefly after that and explain that, and she seemed to, to understand the concept that we were coming forward with, so.
Wow.
I don't want to put words in her mouth, but, you know, I think she understood that.
Okay. Well, I mean, ultimately, Councilperson, well, Vern, do you have a comment on that?
Just on Mr. Assey's statement, that this, this is just a resolution, so this will not come back.
Okay.
It will come back with zoning and/or a, a project, but this is the only time you will see it, if you act on it today.
Well, I know Councilperson Sforaz is very good about appealing matters, if she disagrees with it, and it wasn't appealed, it's on, it's on our uncontested agenda, which is our 12 o'clock agenda. I don't, I don't know how the other members feel. I mean, it is her ward.
Well, I don't see it where we hurt ourselves going ahead with this. And then, like you said, she, she doesn't have a problem appealing and.
And she's not, she's not shy about letting us know that she would have wanted it continued if, if she, if she had concerns about it either, I mean.
Yeah.
So.
It's not like you can condition a master plan amendment either, so.
The advisory commission voted seven in favor and none opposed.
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts on this, Dave?
Well, I did speak with her, and I just don't want to put her in an awkward position, but she said since there's not really a zone change here, that she didn't see, they'd have to come back with us, and a PUD is actually a, a better avenue to get some stuff done. We can condition the PUDs.
Well, we certainly will see this.
She didn't ask, she knew it was on the agenda, she didn't ask us, I'll go with that, she didn't ask us to postpone it, she didn't ask me to.
And didn't appeal it either.
No.
Alright, so, since I'm the at-large member, and I guess the can gets kicked over to me, so to speak.
Well, we could also, we could also put on there, she doesn't, when she comes back, we could vote to reconsider at the next meeting also. There's a lot of.
Yeah, we have two weeks. You're correct. I could always file, since, if, I'm making the motion, so I'd be on the prevailing side, presumably, so, I'll get, I'll go ahead and uphold the recommendation of the planning commission for the master plan amendment.
Have a second? Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Well, with the understanding, if I hear anything different from Councilman Sforaz, then I will put it back on for reconsideration.
Or she will, we know that. Item 311.
Resolution number 7681, resolution to amend resolution number 5673 by adopting a change to the land use plan of the Reno master plan as approved in case number LDC 12-00029.
Move to adopt. Have a second? Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Alright. Item F4, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Alright.
We can do this in expedited manner, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have met with the applicants, and I read, and reading the staff report, it sounds like they've worked everything out with, with our staff. So, I will move to uphold the recommendations of staff, and that would be to amendments to conditions number 1, 10, and 15, and deletion of condition 12.
Motion, do I have a second? Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Resolutions, item H1.
Resolution number 7682, resolution granting community pride grant funds to the Sierra Arts Foundation for sculpture installations on the Fourth Street corridor in the amount of $13,000.
So, all of a sudden, I'm back in the flood zone, this has to be unanimous now. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the mo, I'll, I'll move to adopt.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item H2.
Resolution number 7683, resolution granting community pride grant funds to the Traditional American Music Project to promote and produce the Living History Fair in the amount of $2,250.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're moving H3 and H4. Correct till later. Item H5.
Mr. Chair, on item H3, this relates to the volunteer rolling stock that you directed go forward, so it's up to this council.
That's not part of what we were going to talk about later? Okay. Item H3.
J3.
Four and five.
Yeah, J3, four and five.
Okay. Item H3.
Resolution number 7684, resolution adopting amendment number two to the amended inter-local agreement for fire service and consolidation to transfer, repair, and maintenance of the volunteer rolling stock and attached equipment from city to Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District in accordance with NRS 277.045.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item H4.
Resolution number 7685, resolution pertaining to the extension of the stated termination date of the letter of credit for the City of Reno, Nevada taxed-exempt capital improvement revenue refunding bonds, Series 2005A, and providing other details in connection therewith.
Move to adopt.
I actually have a question.
Question?
Yeah.
Could I have a second? Thank you.
This doesn't change any of the conditions, it's just the extension, correct? It's not transferring of budget or, or resource funding?
This is Robert Chisel, Finance Director for the City of Reno. There are actually a couple of minor changes to the letter of credit. Most of them are related to timeframes and reporting notifications, however, there are two more major changes. One, the rates, if the bonds become bank bonds, has been reduced from up to 13% interest down to about 10 and a half or 11% interest.
Right, that $198,000 savings.
Yeah, and, well, and the second change was the basis points of which we're paying is going from 167 basis points down to 140 basis points, which will save us that $198,000 for the next year. So, other than that, those are the major changes that have occurred in the letter of credit.
Thank you.
So, is that the difference in what we had to do with the ballpark box? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item H5, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Resolution number 7686, resolution directing staff to reject applications and/or refuse to issue building permits to alter, enlarge, or relocate on-premise signs regulated by the Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.16, Signs, and Section 18.16.804, Alteration, Enlargement, and Relocation of On-Premise Signs, commencing immediately and continuing for a period not to exceed 90 days from the date of approval of this resolution and other matters properly relating thereto.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. I want.
I want.
I want.
I want is Bill Number 6790, ordinance to amend Title V entitled Privilege, Licenses, Permits, and Franchises, Chapter 8 entitled Pawn Brokers and Secondhand Dealers by amending Section 5.08.125 entitled Moratorium on Secondhand Dealers and Precious Metals to Extend the Expiration Date of the Moratorium until August 23, 2012, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Move to refer.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. J, J3, four, whoops, let's, we can get J2 out of the way. Item J2, City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council. For the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager. Before you today is an item relating to the Legislative Commission's sub, ongoing subcommittee Before you today is an item relating to the Legislative Commission's sub, ongoing Subcommittee to study, to study, excuse me, the C-Tax distribution in our state. In the staff report, I had included initially a table of items that had been identified at the March 15th C-Tax Committee meeting. And we'd received direction, or a request, rather, that each local government take that table back to our governing bodies and ask that you review the items contained in that. Since completing the staff report late last week on Friday, we received actually an additional request from the, through the Legislative Council Bureau, I believe, that that memorandum was distributed to you earlier today. And that in fact, they are asking for a more detailed response in a form that they have proposed to us. Given that late development, my request to you would be perhaps that you consider the original staff recommendation that was in, included in the original staff report, which was that you support a number of areas, further consideration of a number of areas, and I'm happy to go through that in a moment. But that using that recommendation as the basis for which staff would complete this questionnaire, if you will. Unfortunately, from a timing standpoint, we've been requested to provide answers on this questionnaire by April 13th. And as you know, you won't have your next meeting until April 25th. So it would be staff's request that certainly prepared to answer, or will attempt to answer as many questions as I can today on the subjects that are contained in either the questionnaire or the table that was provided originally. And please engage in that dialogue if you'd like.
Well, we, because of the shortness of time and stuff, I think we should go ahead and follow staff's recommendation.
And the recommend, excuse me, the recommendation is we'd oppose any changes to the first tier, correct?
That is correct.
I'll make the motion to approve staff recommendation, incorporate those comments into the questionnaire.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The incorporating the comments were the ones from the handout that you gave us before, right?
That's correct.
I just wanted to clarify the motion.
Yep. Okay, have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J345 are being moved down to right before M2. And I would like now just to go through boards and commission appointments, K1. Any boards and commission appointments, downtown police?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Mr. Gustans, and he asked me before he left if I would go ahead and make the motion to appoint Greg Landris.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Business Enterprise Fund?
Is that Councilperson Sprazza?
Yeah.
Is there any urgency to appoint today? Can we wait till?
We'll keep advertising.
Well, no, some guy's eligible.
Can we just move to appoint him for a month? Because otherwise, he might not, if he's not a member.
Yeah, good point. I'll make the motion to appoint Jess Traver.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Identification for future items, agenda items? Here none. We'll go to liaison reports. Any liaison reports?
Do we need a report on Monday's meeting, Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Do we need a report on Monday's meeting?
Oh, no, I just, I just.
Sorry, I stopped.
I just weaned myself off of Roll-Aids and I'm not going back on them today. Reports of any conference and professional meetings? Resolution?
Resolution number 7687, resolution donating $1,900 from the council donation funds to the Great Basin Youth Soccer League for Miracle on Turf, the rebirth of Morana Stadium Fields.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Let's save the good deed report for the next time, please.
We could hear it right now.
Okay, we'll take that. Come on. Come on.
That was one good deed. You just did. You just did a good deed right there.
I just reversed. Sure. You notice the way he kind of dropped his head and whimpered a little bit. I'm glad you pointed it out to me. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council Manager, Chris Good, Director of Neighborhood Services. I do have a few items of good news to report for you today. The first is a regularly recurring event at the family shelter is, they call it brightening birthdays. They, each month, they have a birthday party for all the kids who have a birthday in that month. And the interesting thing, the thing that makes it noteworthy right now is that the students at Minogue High School have taken it upon themselves to organize and put these parties on each of the last three months. It's been a real good community outreach to teach the students there at Minogue about what happens at the shelter. And they reach out to these kids and help them celebrate their birthdays. The people who run the shelter have reached out to different organizations throughout the community. And they have different organizations, including Southwest Airlines and others, who are going to sponsor these events all the way through October. So the community is really reaching out to the families at the family shelter. Another item is, as we mentioned last week, yes, the competition for the Veterans Guest House to bring in $250,000 into our community to help veterans and their families. They were successful. They beat out 10 competitors from across the country. It was a real community effort that brought together all these votes on Facebook and put our guest house at the top of the list.
Their competitors were also a lot bigger than our city.
Yes, yes, sir.
And thank you to Home Depot for donating that $250,000.
Thanks, Home Depot.
Yes, indeed. My last two items are prospective. Everybody ought to know by now that opening day is tomorrow at Aces Stadium at 6:35 PM. The first pitch will be thrown out. They're going to be playing the Colorado Springs Sky Sox. This starts an eight-day home stand. They'll be competing against Colorado for the first four games, and next week, four more games against Salt Lake. So baseball season begins in Reno. Yay pack.
Yes, and the Pack beat them last night.
My last item, excuse me, my last item of good news is food truck Fridays are going to start. The very first food truck Friday will be this Friday, starting at 6 o'clock at the city center location at Fourth and Center Streets. We have at least seven food trucks coming. I think it's actually more than that, but at least seven of them, eight. We have eight, yes. Food trucks will be there. There will be live music. There will be other vendors, arts and crafts kind of things. We expect these to be very popular. It's going to be the first Friday of each month, all the way through the whole summer. So come on down Friday at 6 o'clock and bring an appetite. And that's your good news for today.
How do you handle them during hot August nights, street vibrations and stuff like that? Are you still going to do them on Friday nights?
The, your city of Reno special events staff has got that all worked out.
That's great.
Well, there's a couple new ones I haven't been able to try yet. Dish Cafe has a brand-new truck.
Yeah, we'll try that.
I haven't tried them yet. I like the tater tots at Calvin's.
When I was, when I was growing up, those were a little, a little different in those days than they are today. All right. Let's see, now we're going to go into recess for about 30 minutes. So we'll be in reset.
I might be there.
We're in recess for 30 minutes.
Several of these issues. And then, of course, what morphed out of that was the county's meeting on Tuesday discussed the JPA that was offered at the Monday meeting to see if that may be an alternative to the county in lieu of breaking up the fire department. So I think for that reason as well, we should continue this until after Tuesday's meeting and see what the county, what the county does on Tuesday.
I agree with you, and I think the chair will entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make.
Do you think that was a motion? Do I have a second?
I'm sorry?
I'm going to rule that as a motion. Did you?
Oh, I was going to say, have legal contact the county's legal about that silver decision, any other legal impediments that you may find, as well as, let's see what the county has to say on Tuesday, so we'll just continue this item. And do I need to continue it to a date certain?
You can continue it to your next regular meeting.
When's that going to be? Is that in, that's not in two weeks, is it?
No, that's April 25th or something like that.
April 25th. You can also have a special meeting if you choose to, as a council.
Why don't we continue this to no later than April 25th, and then obviously, if we have to meet sooner, then staff can get us back together, Mr. Mayor? Because obviously, time is of the essence, and if we're going to make this thing work, we're going to have to do it on an expedited basis.
Understood.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J4. Chief?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. This is more of an administrative item. This speaks to a automatic aid agreement, mutual aid agreement, that the Consolidated Fire Department had Reno-Truckee Meadows with the Sierra Fire Protection District. Staff is asking that we submit a written notice of termination to Sierra Fire Protection District so that we may renegotiate an automatic aid agreement consistent with what we're doing with the rest of our partners in the region.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I also want to put on the record, this would be effective June 30th. So because it will be a new entity as well, Sierra Fire Protection District and Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, given the current direction of the county is merging, basically. So we would need the appropriate parties on an agreement, so that's why it is administrative.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? A second, discussion?
Second for discussion.
Yeah, as I understand it, if we had another, we had, able to do a special meeting in the interim, we could basically, could we reverse the notice of termination?
Tracy Chase again. Yes, you can at any time. There's a certain requirement, and my memory was like 120 days. That's why we had to give notice now for a future termination.
Okay, and then, just so we're clear on this, I mean, the door is still open to sit down with the county and work through this out. I think what the staff recommendation is, is we terminate, we do the notice of termination, but we'd sit down with the county on the 12-hour model, all the other things that you've talked about before.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that again, in my own words, Mr. Mayor. We have to terminate this because this entity no longer exists.
That is correct.
Because of a notice from the county, it doesn't, it's not, we're playing tit for tat. It's just, we don't exist anymore, so we're folding up.
You're absolutely correct. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J5.
Resolution number 7688, resolution of the City Council of the City of Reno, finding that it is necessary to reduce staff of the Reno Consolidated Fire Department and authorizing the city manager to take all necessary and appropriate actions to implement this resolution for fiscal year 2011-12.
Chief, how soon do you have to send these notices out as we're working on these things?
We can defer down to as late as late May. Or we can send them out on, within the next couple of weeks. I'm going to turn to Renee Rungis with our HR. But we do have some time. Again, what we are waiting on is some type of action from the county to let us know exactly the number of employees that will be transferring from our system or moving from our system into the TM system.
Well, plus, the other, I think, important point is we can rescind these notices all the way up to June 30th, correct?
Much like we did last year, sir. You're correct. We rescinded notices on the very last day.
Ms. Rungis?
Yes, Renee Rungis, Director of Human Resources, City of Reno. The minimum requirement to give notice to the employees is 10 working days, so they need that minimum amount of time. Plus, they do have appeal rights to the Civil Service Commission, and so it's been the city's practice to have that appeal prior to the effective date of layoff.
So we could wait until we're out 60 days and still give everything, or do we need to do it right now, chief? Whatever makes it easy on you and staff, because we know we've got a lot of things up in the air.
That's correct. And as we continue to work with the county mayor, I would like to recommend that, working in conjunction with Human Resources, that we hold off on notices until late May. And that will still give us enough time to meet the obligations with respect to civil service and having the opportunity to the employee to appeal. And again, it leaves us some room in the event that there is some positive discussion that evolves with respect to joint powers agreement with the county.
Right. Ms. Asi?
Let me bring up a different point here, Mr. Mayor, and maybe argue for sending them out now. We've already said it's 80. Pretty much everybody knows they're on that list. But there might be some people right on the edge that don't know. And I don't know when the county's going to offer jobs to people. But if I were a firefighter right now, possibly in that list, I'd want to know if I'm on that list. Because if I get offered a job by the county, that would tell me whether, might tell me whether I want to take it or not. They, everyone knows that we can rescind that if we want to. But if I knew, if I'm right on that cusp and I don't really know if I'm there or not, that would really affect what I'm going to do in the future.
I don't disagree with you. I think giving them notice so they can start planning their lives as much as they can and not wait until the last. Because my understanding that the other agency wants to wait until the last day of the month before they tell them whether they're hired or not, so.
And there may be some other entity out there that's hiring, you know? I don't know.
Well, can we talk about that?
Do they, I'm sorry, Pierre, go ahead.
I was going to say, I mean, it may not be a one-for-one transfer over, I mean, we have to, we have to send termination notices to, let's say, X number. Those same people may not be being interviewed by the county, or as Dave indicates, accepted by the county as they have to transfer over to the county's fire department. But there may be individuals that will get a notice that are not going to be hired.
Well, they may not have even applied.
That's what I was going to ask. Do they still have the opportunity to apply? I believe the opportunity to apply is closed.
See, so you might send a notice to somebody potentially that may not be able to, that's why I think the chief's recommended wait, because if we work this out with the county, it doesn't unnecessarily send a notice to somebody. They may not be, their job may be saved by May. I mean, I'll stand corrected on that. I know what we've gone through with other employees when they get a notice of termination. It's pretty devastating.
It is devastating, but giving them as much notice so they can start looking for another job.
It's just a call.
That's the only thing that I was thinking is, I was, why I switched over agreeing with Mr. Asi is.
Well, he makes a good point.
You're giving them more time to look for a job while they've still got a little eggs coming on the breakfast table.
And so that the mayor and the council and the manager understand this is, this entire process has had an extremely negative impact on the organization. Not only are we looking at a potential, a significant potential number of layoffs, but once, you know, if we do in fact deconsolidate, which in my opinion, we are going to deconsolidate, we are looking at restat, readjusting our staffing levels, readjusting our ranks. There will be some demotions from captain to engineer, from engineer to firefighter, and it's having an impact on our budget. We've got individuals that are, that may be laid off, that are, that are cashing out their accrued leave banks. Because if they, if they go over to the new TM system and they do agree to take their leave banks, their leave banks are worth less money. So, you know, and these are very uncertain, very difficult times for the employees. And it's not just as simple as sending out the layoff notices. There are also potential demotions in the future. So it's an extremely difficult process for our employees, and it's tough.
Let me ask this. If we authorize this, that doesn't mean they have to go out now. I mean, ultimately, they all work for you, Mr. City Manager, and Human Resources, and I think you take that into account more than we do here. So if we authorize it today, it would be up to you to actually want to send them out, correct?
Correct.
And just take these comments, you know, we all have an opinion, but I would trust you and you, chief, to figure out who, how the people who work for you would take the news one way or the other.
And so, you know, sir, I have, I send out departmental updates as often as I deem appropriate. And in my last email to the organization, I did, it's common knowledge that there are 80 potential layoffs, and per the collective bargaining contract, we start from the last hired and we work our way up. So they, those 80 individuals know who they are.
And I want to point out, I hope everyone, we're trying to do the best we can to not have this happen.
I agree.
This isn't a fiscal issue right now. It's just because of this breakup.
Well, and chief, I wanted to give you the opportunity. Just a couple of moments ago, you said, in your opinion, you think that we are going to deconsolidate. I want to make sure that that's clearly understood, that you believe that's the action the county will continue with.
Yes, ma'am. The county has made it abundantly clear that they are on a track to deconsolidate. As such, you will see me coming to this council, probably by the next council meeting, with a lease agreement for us to move into a temporary facility as we move forward in the construction of our new station in the south. So the time has come. We're, you know, we're 90, a little over 90 days out. I've got to take definitive action to ensure service delivery, not only to our southern constituents, but also in our northern areas. We're taking action as we speak to make Station 9 instead, move in ready by mid-June. And that's just the path forward that we're on. We, I have no choice. This is, this is the charge that I have to protect the citizens of Reno, and this is what I'm, I intend to do.
They made it very clear on Monday that they're going straight ahead. They voted four to one several times, and they're going to move ahead. They voted four to one several times, and they're going to move ahead with it. So, you have to find another location for us in the south so that, and I hope you have a location fixed out, and we need to, when do you bring that back to us?
Likely at the next council meeting.
Okay, if you need it.
I believe at the 25th.
If you need it sooner, we can call an emergency meeting so you can get started and get it freshened up and remodeled and everything else so that our people can move in.
And we do need to take that proactive response to the county's decision, but that won't prohibit us in any way from moving forward positively and trying to stand up a joint powers agreement.
Absolutely. Everything that we're going to do has a back door, if you will, regardless of, the decision to construct the new station in the south, should we regionalize, would be a benefit to the region in that area. So, again, as we move forward, we're moving forward with a global perspective, but with the focus on serving our citizens first and foremost.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sort of going back to J3, how much do you think it's going to take around on this new fire station, this lease? Is that less than $25,000?
The lease agreement is for $3,000 a month, and it'll probably take right out $30,000 to rehab it, make it...
What's the limit you have, City?
25.
But you could get started on something with this discussion before it even comes back to us, so it saves you some time.
Right.
Where you could sort of take some direction on J3 that you ought to move forward on that. If we need an extra couple of weeks, you could use part of that to get moving.
Right.
Understood.
And then, just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I mean, the county did say they would consider the proposal for a JPA this Tuesday, so we should know from the county on Tuesday if they're willing to keep the fire departments together, keep this consolidated, and move forward with the JPA.
Because right now, they've indicated that they're, want to go down two separate tracks at the same time instead of just negotiate, putting everything on freeze, promotions, and everything else. They want to go ahead with theirs on a joint track and negotiated JPA like it's going to put pressure on us to do something, that we should put a stop to everything.
But they did vote unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
To move forward and have another meeting on...
Yeah, they had three people vote for it, so that's good.
...Hachef's proposal, so...
Yes. No, that's great.
Well, it was the City of Reno's motion to move forward with the JPA, and the county actually made the same motion, but they just want to talk to it at Tuesday's meeting. Obviously, we're ready to go.
Yep.
But so, I'm, I think we give them a chance on Tuesday.
Absolutely. Chair, give them...